Testing, testing before we start.
Test.
Test.
Hello, everyone. I call the Select Board meeting to order on January 3 at 7:39 PM. A motion to open the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. For roll call, Mr. Gito.
I'm here.
Mr. McCrisky?
I'm here.
Vice Chair Cavey?
Here.
Mr. Carrara?
Here.
And I'm here as well. I ask all to stand if you're able to salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with Governor Baker's declaration of June 16, 2021, granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to public board and town meetings and recently extended until March 31, 2023, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google meets. The meeting may be recorded by SMAC, cable television, and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stoughton.tv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if live broadcast or live streaming is unsuccessful. Times or approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. First, citizens' comments. Before we start on our agenda, we have a few words that we wanted to share. They're words of sympathy. Mr. Carrara, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair and the board, for this leeway. We've had three passings over the weekend, and they're all people involved in Stoughton. And one of the ones that we have is Brenda Souza Catalano. She's a lifelong resident of Stoughton. She was 72. She graduated in 1969 from Stoughton High. She married Steve Catalano, whose family is well-known in town, too. And they were married for 33 years. Brenda was a hairdresser at Tendertrap for like 35 years. And she was like a caring person that if you had somebody in your family that needed like, it was before CNAs and stuff like that, she would come over and she would stay with them for a month or whatever and take care of them. She had a heart that was huge. And then she got involved in SMAC, which was actually Stoughton Cable at that time. And she was a producer and she was big into We the People and Snyder's of Stoughton, which is another show. And it's just, I want everybody to know that she was a good person and caring. And she leaves behind her sisters Sandra Grover, Linda LaFleur, and Deborah Belier. And they're all of Stoughton, too. So that was just one. And she's a dear, dear person. I knew her personally. And I'll tell you what, her dad was a member of the Stoughton Police Department. And he was the court officer. And he always wore those half-glasses. And when he took those off, you knew you were going to jail. We also have another gentleman who was involved in Stoughton, Dave DeRoz. And Mr. DeRoz was an engineer in the Army. And he was involved in Little League, I know, at times. He was a precinct eight town meeting member. And he formed a very important group of people, which was the Stoughton Citizens Association about when we had the polluted properties down on Canton Street. And he was very, very active in that and pulled it all together. And they were cleaned up. And he has a large family. His wife Audrey, and he survived by his children, Susan DeRoz, and Karen DeRoz, and her husband Paul, Kathleen Mazur, and David DeRoz Jr. And he was just, he was a good gentleman. He was that word, gentleman. He did a lot for Stoughton, but he was very involved in the contamination that went on. And he just was on top of it. And he secured the site for the people down there. It was very good. But I think the toughest thing we have to face is that we lost a member of the Stoughton Police Department. And he was a very young person, 42 years old, Christopher Davis. And he was always a guy with a smile. He loved his job. He was the quintessential dedicated member of his uniform. He was a special operations unit and tactics instructor. He worked with the Stoughton Fire Department. He was a licensed and certified arson investigator. He was also an award winner of numerous commendations, and he got a distinguished service award. He was just, he was like the cop's cop, cop friend. I met him on road jobs, and he was always a gentleman, always attentive, always did his job. He was a nice guy. But it's sad that we've had to lose him. So I'd just like to say to his mother, his brother, his daughter, and his fiancee, Chief MacDamar in the Stoughton Police Force, please accept the board's deepest sympathy and thoughts that we are definitely with them to go through another tragedy as many are unfolding in our town. But to all of these people who've passed away, please have a moment of silence to wish them off and send them off well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Carrara. Our hearts are broken, wishing the family and the friends the best in our sincere condolences. Moving forward to our agenda item, first is Select Board comments. Are there any Select Board comments? Vice Chair Cavey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the first meeting of 2023, so Happy New Year to everybody here and all the folks at home. Every year that I've been on the board, I've tried to use this opportunity, the first meeting of the year, to have some New Year's resolutions about things I want to see occur over the coming year. The first time I was here, the first couple of years I was here, I had three priorities. I keep on coming back to those same three. Thankfully, two of them have been crossed off the list. The first one is economic growth. We're seeing a lot of economic growth in the town. We have a lot of projects that are geared towards economic growth. I think we're on a really healthy trajectory on that front. And the work we've done, both with Robyn Grimm, putting together a strong budget team, and what we've carried on with Mr. Coulter, has allowed us to continue to emphasize the importance of economic growth for our town. But we can't just grow our way out of all the problems in the world, right? So we need to be smart about our finances as well. I think that we have turned a corner on that front, and I'm thankful for it. The second item that I've brought up year over year is the fire station and the importance of it, getting a new fire station for the men and women of the Stoughton Fire Department. They've endured subpar facilities for a very long time. And we are, after last year's vote, we're seeing some movement on that front. The project has continued on, so far as I'm aware, on target, on task, I haven't heard otherwise. And I'm sure I would if there's any problems. But no good news is good news. Just keep the ball rolling, keep it happening. So I'm thankful for that. So the third item I've brought up in the past that I think it's time now to emphasize is senior housing. I think that our town is in desperate need of senior housing and other sorts of housing alternatives. And I think now's the time to start to prioritize that and take it seriously. I think that the effect it's already had, the lack of availability, has already had a profound impact on the quality of life in our town. We have a lot of homes that would normally be considered starter homes, including my own street. I live on Ewing Drive. There's a lot of Cape Cod's, small homes. And typically, you know, you expect a neighborhood, these neighborhoods to fill up with a lot of younger families and people who are just the very beginning of their earning potential. And we are actually seeing them mostly populated with seniors who are living off of fixed incomes. And without having the availability of people to come into the town, and we end up with a disproportionate number of seniors affecting the, they are the tax base. They are living on fixed incomes, but any sort of economic growth comes at their expense. And I think that offering alternatives in housing, if they want to downsize, then obviously they're free to stay wherever they want to stay. But if they wanted to downsize and move to a smaller place, then we should have something available for them to do that. And I'd like to put some emphasis into that over this coming year. Since the other two items I had on my list are done, so far so good, this one's going to get my full attention. And so over the coming year, that's where I'm going to put most of my energy is into seeing some sort of a senior housing program developed and hopefully bring something to, not this year, but the next year's town meeting. So anybody who's in this with me, feel free to reach out. I would love to work with anybody who has any ideas. I've got some of my own, but I want to see this succeed. And I know that there's a lot of people who are more clever than I am. But this is what I want to see happen. So, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cavey. Any other, oh, Mr. McCrisky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I guess to touch on it, and I wasn't prepared to say anything on the area, but we're, Superintendent of Public Works is here with his head down on his book. Now he's saying, oh, no, he just mentioned my name. So I just wanted to shout out to Paul Jaffoon. I've been literally driving this guy crazy the last two months with trash being left out and people putting things out that shouldn't be picked up, people putting other people's trash out. And I think this is pretty darn close to being a daily phone call that I make to the superintendent. And I just want to, through you, Madam Chair, publicly to ask the town manager, not that it wouldn't happen, and Mr. Tisdale, to, you know, give him the assistance he needs. I know that there was something on a flyer being put in, the local shopper's guide. But we need to up the game on what we're doing here. It's pretty difficult for the Superintendent of Public Works to be doing the job that he's got to do on a daily basis and put up with phone calls, you know, talking about trash. And I talked about this before, and I guess I'll talk about it again because it needs to be said, is that we need to step up our game to protect our town from going in the wrong direction. We all talk about all the great things we want to do in the town, but there's more things that are taking us down the wrong path. With the way that vehicles are parked all over town, there's no rhyme or reason. People park on the opposite side of the road. They park too close to an intersection, you know. We've got commercial vehicles being left in certain areas. I know that was a couple, I didn't even ask if we addressed them, but I know that we were going to address a couple of issues. I did see one with a parking ticket that was left on Central Street over the weekend, the holiday weekend. There was one there. But we've got tractor trailers parking over at the train station. They drop off their cars during the day. They take their truck tractor out, go do a day's work. So we've got to up our game. I know that it's tough right now, you know, with zoning enforcement. We had a vacancy in the position. But I just more want to say thank you to Paul because it can be frustrating, you know, when you've got to put up with my phone calls. And, but we've got to, residents have to know what's going on. I would like to see the flyer, everything that we can put on our website. We need a Facebook presence. And I don't know if that's something we can do through our IT department, if we can set up a Town of Stoughton website, you know, a Facebook page where it could be that conduit. What I'd like to do is ask the town manager to have Mr. Jaffoon reach out to Roberta Habeck that handles the Stoughton Town Crier and make sure that all the information gets into the Town Crier. Because if residents don't know the rules, that you're not supposed to have your trash out more than, you know, 24 hours, 12 hours, I believe, and, you know, they put it out two and three days before. And that's not good for the integrity of our neighborhoods when everywhere you go, there's trash in the streets. Right over here on School Street, there's been wood, bed frame and wood, been out there for a week. I called Paul on a treadmaster in a neighborhood, been out there for a month. And it's tough enough for them to do the job picking up trash and then have to go out and pick up for the people that are not following the rules. The DPW has stickers that they should be using, I believe they are. And I think we have to look at Board of Health, you know, and littering. When you, if you, we can't do that right away. We've got to inform residents, but it's got to get to a point where people have to know what the rules are here. And we just can't have trash spewing all over the streets. And that's what it's becoming. It impacts our budget because now it's taking us longer to do routes. That, you know, the superintendent implemented a plan that was, you know, working smarter, not hotter. But when we have to go out to the route and send another person out to pick up several stops, that's not working smart. But so I wanted to bring that up and really on the area to say, Paul, thank you for, you know, for getting the job done. I know it could be aggravating, but, you know, this is our town, you know? And he's done a great job. I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. But, Mr. Town Manager, whatever you can do to ramp this up, to give Paul the tools, if we can bring IT into it, look at putting up a Town of Stoughton municipal Facebook page that department heads or department heads through the IT department could have it posted, you know, so that residents will know what's going on. And I think this goes with what Mr. Gito had mentioned, you know, about getting our town resources out there for the residents, you know, through the town website, which I know has been getting updates. But we need a conduit that everything flows into our website. If we have a Facebook post, the post where it is on the link to the town website where people can go for resources. So if you could give him that assistance, I would greatly appreciate it. Madam Chair, thank you. And to follow up on Scott and then Steve quickly. Scott did mention Dave DeRoz. And when I saw the passing of Dave, I was there through all of that contamination issue. And you want to talk about a gentleman who rallied his neighbors and was dictating to the Select Board what got done. That was exactly what local government's all about. That man was a bold leader. He made a difference for all of Stoughton on that issue, in addition to his neighbors. Mr. Cavey, I would ask on, and I think it's great, on senior housing. I've spoken to a developer as well about the possibility of a private-public partnership, you know, if that's something we can do. But I'd ask you include Roberta Habeck, who's been pushing the tiny houses for a long time. And I think that it's definitely worth, this goes to the previous planner we had was engaged, and we had a meeting with the former town manager, and it was supposed to have been followed up with, but it wasn't. And I think that Ms. Habeck has made a very good presentation, and we should at least listen, give her, you know, her five minutes of fame to see and talk with, you know, the department heads and engineering, building department, all that, and see if that's something we do. We own the land already, you know? So all it takes is an article at town meeting if people want to borrow and do something like that. And it might be a way as well because, you know, it seems happening with a lot of housing is that it used to be if you were a Stoughton resident, you got priority. Well, when you take state and federal funds, you know, that's changed things. And the only way that we would be able to give Stoughton residents a priority is if we pay for it. So it might be time to see, you know, what would that impact be? What can we do? And, you know, I definitely think it's worth it. So if you can reach out to her, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. Mr. Coulter, you had a couple of comments?
During the announcements, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much.
All the board members have anything to say?
Mr. Gito?
Thank you. I wasn't going to say anything, but I will.
I'm glad you are. Thank you.
We talk about a lot of things that need to be done. I mentioned at the last meeting that I think we really need to reassess the 2% that we seem to be thinking about giving to the school for our share of the education. We have a lot of needs in the town. We can make phone calls to Paul Jaffoon. We can do a lot of things, and I think that those things are important to do. But if he doesn't have the resources to go out and do the work that needs to be done, then all we're doing is putting pressure on people who are already pretty much going full bore. So I hope that either tonight or at our next meeting, we can take a little bit of time and make a determination on what that percentage will be so that we can plan and present a final budget to the Finance Committee. If we keep putting that off, we're not going to get there. That's my brief but spectacular comment.
Thank you.
Or maybe it's unspectacular.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gito. First of all, I would like to acknowledge Mr. Paul, just raise your hand. I don't know if the cameras can see you. Many people out in the audience don't know who you are. We see the results of your great work, so I just wanted to acknowledge you and all the good things that you do. I'll save my comments for later. Mr. Coulter, you wanted to say a few things? I wanted to, in the essence of time, you know, kind of stay on track.
I'll be very brief, Madam Chair. Just a few announcements. Excuse me. To Mr. McCrisky, I want to make clear, I may not have informed him in the past. And to Mr. Gito, who I know this is very important to, the town website is now completely designed. It's under construction, and it'll be online by the first week of February. It's a brand-new model, brand-new approach, designed after a lot of spectacular websites and has taken the input of department heads. And the department heads are in the process, and I know Paul has done this, of uploading their particular departments with information specific to those departments. So I think that's going to serve the requests of both selectmen who have expressed interest in this area. So good things to come. First announcement, Paula Newt, our treasurer-collector, issued the FY '23 third and fourth quarter real estate and personal property tax bills on December 31. Both remit quarter invoices were in the same envelope. Important to note, both quarterly invoices are in the same envelope. These tax bills are due February 1, '23, and May 1, '23. All unpaid first and second quarter tax balances have accrued interest at 14% from the first and second quarter due dates, depending on which quarters are unpaid. Real estate and personal property tax bills may be paid online at stoughton.org. Second announcement, very quick, one sentence. The abatement and demolition contractor for the fire station project will be on-site at the 400 Prospect Street site this week. They'll be cleaning up some of the outside debris, adding site fencing around the building, and beginning the pest control plan for the project. Just wanted residents to be aware of that. That's all for me, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coulter. At my discretion, I'm moving some things around, so, and taking them out of order. So item number seven, which is change of manager. Akure, Pearlman, Adelate Liquors, that's being removed. Also, item number nine, change of manager. Smokey Bones, James Dorsey is being removed. Item number 11, bylaws, which was to be presented by Attorney Dolan, Deanna Chadso, and Tracy Ferrera. Or are you going to? Just one second, please. Okay. Because he's ill and unable to present today, going back to the bylaw attorney Dolan. So that will be tabled until our next meeting. Also, our town manager is ill, our, I'm sorry, town manager is here. Economic Development Officer is ill. So I ask that our accountant, Bill Rowe, would you like to join us at the table? And this, please. And that's to help facilitate discussions when we talk about the budget. Next is item number 12, fiscal year 2024 operating and capital budget items. Our per usual process is to have our department heads in attendance so they can answer any questions. So I'm asking my fellow board members, do you have a specific department that you have questions? Otherwise, I guess loosely use the word release, release the department heads because it's no need in them staying for the whole night if we don't have any questions for them.
Madam Chair, what, what's that, do you know you're working for? My company even have a 12.
12, do you have, Ed, do you have fiscal year 2024 operating and capital budget?
Number 10.
Okay, that's the number 10?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And there's other people sitting here besides town employees that aren't getting a nickel.
That aren't getting a nickel?
From the town in any form. They're just here waiting for their, I think, nickel.
Right. So wait just a, give me one quick second, Ms. Walsh. So are there any departments that you have questions? If so, you'll ask them to stay. We can, I use the term release. Do you have any questions? Or should they all stay? Okay, so they will all stay. So remove that question. They're here now? Okay. The next item is from our consent agenda. Those items may be tabled. So now I'll go back to, Town Manager made his comments, and then I'll go to citizens' comments, and then we'll be back in order. I just wanted to ask that question before we went on. Citizens' comment, and that is, Ms. Walsh, please step forward. State your name and a... comment, and that is, Ms. Walsh, please step forward. State your name and address, please.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Walsh, we can.
Okay. I wanted to say a few things about the 300th Anniversary Committee. The first thing is, I am not the gatekeeper. Anyone who wishes to be on the committee needs to apply for the committee. You can get an application from the town manager's office, the Select Board office. I believe it's also on the town website. Then you can email it, mail it, or hand-deliver it to the Select Board office. The Select Board will put you on their agenda in the future and decide whether you're going to be on the committee or not. Right now, there is, suppose, there's five people. And I've been trying to get their names, phone numbers, and email addresses, and I haven't been able to. I scheduled with the help of your administrative assistant and the town clerk's office, an organizational meeting in December. One person showed up, and he had not been sworn in. Then last week, I learned that there won't be town support for the committee. Rather, it will be grants and fundraising. And I am not a grant writer, and I am not a fundraiser. It seems to me we spend thousands of dollars every year on community events like the Fourth of July and the Parade of Lights. This is a one-in-three-century occurrence. I won't be back here, you know, year after year after year after year asking for more money. After 2026, that's it. It appears that the committee that I thought I was going to be on is not going to be the committee that there's going to be. I was just hoping to use my administrative and planning skills and my, I would consider extremely vast knowledge of the community to plan something really outstanding. Those aren't the skills you appear to want. So I have no desire to be the captain of the Titanic, and I will be submitting a resignation to the town clerk's office from the 300th Anniversary Committee. I serve the town in six other capacities, including deputy moderator, so you don't have to worry that I'll be sitting home twiddling my thumbs. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, please, Mr. Gito, because I have a couple of questions too.
Where did the idea that there would be no funding for this come from?
Well, perhaps my hearing aids and this listening device weren't working properly last week, but I thought I understood the chair to say that there wouldn't be a, an article in the town meeting to fund the committee.
I guess I didn't hear that either.
Am I incorrect?
I did not say that.
I thought you said grants and fundraising.
No, that's not the only thing. I, I'm advocating to put funds in the budget for the 100. And as soon as we get there, I'll say those words. We haven't gotten there yet, to talk about the budget and that line item. I, let me say this again. I am an advocate for putting funding toward our 300th celebration. I am an advocate for having members actively engaged in forming a spectacular 300th celebration. I am an advocate for having you, Mrs. Walsh, stay on this committee because I recently was told someone else would like to join. I have asked, and I plan to have it as an agenda item, maybe not the January 17th meeting, but the first meeting we have in February. So I would ask that you hold on a little bit, and then I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised.
Madam Chair.
Oh, wait, I have several people that are tugging at me right now. After you make a comment, then Mr. McCrisky has a comment as well.
I, I can't imagine. I must have been on some sort of cold medication to completely misunderstand your remarks. But there should be an actual article, not part of the budget, because the budget expires every June 30th. We need an article that is going to carry over until 2026. So that's one thing I'd mention. I will say this, until the selectmen approve the warrant on the first Tuesday of February, I will hold on to my letter of resignation.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCrisky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the comments that referred to grants and fundraising may have come, maybe not the grants, but the fundraising. I did point out that when I was the chair of the 275th, Ms. Walsh was with us then as well, is that we did a lot of fundraising, and the fundraising was successful. But I will like to, through you, Mr. Chair, recognize the, Mr. Rowe, who I saw with his hand up there. And I believe, tell me, Bill, if I'm wrong, didn't we have $10,000 in a revolving account that we had set up when Mr. O'Regan was here? That we had that, some money put aside for that? Did we not?
Well, we have the Community Events Revolving account. It's basically a donation fund. But, you know, the 300th Anniversary Committee, there's an article on there to set it up, and there's another article on there to fund it so far on this, on this sheet, so.
Because I know that we've talked about community events. Community events was started with a whole different purpose when it was started, and it was, it was run by residents. And now that's kind of been turned over to a department in town. But I think, and I want to make sure that we're very all aware and we're all in sync, that there was money in there for the 300, and that money should be in one way or another accounted for and not taken for anything outside that purpose. So I think I want to be very clear that there was money that we agreed to, and I, the $10,000 amount rings in my head. And I want to make sure that that money, that account never goes under that $10,000, so that that money can be counted on, so that when we do get the committee up and running, that they can get some things rolling, until we can get the supplemental, the article in as well, to Ms. Walsh's point, is that we don't have to worry about reallocating that money. So we'll get the article, it'll always be there. And we can get corporate sponsors, that can happen, you know? And there's a lot of people that would be willing to do it again. So I just want to make sure, because, you know, the comment that Ms. Walsh made, I was surprised to hear, because I was here as well. That comment was not made by the chair. In no way or manner did the chair ever imply that there would not be funds. I was sitting right here, I'd hear it too. So that's all I get to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Do we need a, do we need something in the, in our financial system that has a 300th anniversary account? Or is that already there?
So, Mr. Coulter, and then Mr. Rowe.
Sorry about that. It's in the capital budget, an Article 4, funding for the 300. It's in the capital budget before us right now. So it wasn't overlooked. It is in the budget.
I think the point that, that's, that's a good thing. Thank you. But I think the point that, that Ms. Walsh was making is that perhaps it shouldn't be a year-to-year thing. We may want to, when we put in an article for town meeting, that, that we're able to, to deal with it on a longer time period.
It does carry over. So if it were in the 2024 operating budget, it would need year-to-year replenishing.
It would stay in there?
No, that would need year-to-year replenishing. That's not the case here.
Okay.
This is an article for this town meeting this spring. So it stays in place.
Thank you. I, I, I didn't catch that. Thank you.
Mr. Rowe. Oh, thank you, Mr. Coulter.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, the town manager basically stated what I was going to say. So, yeah. So you, there's a certain dollar amount. I think the idea, where I've seen it done in other communities, there's various articles, year after year, to fund, to fund the, to fund the celebration.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. I think we are all set for the time being, and wait until February, when we can talk about the 300th and what the committee is doing. In the meantime, let's see if we can get everyone sworn in and let them know that, yeah, we're actively engaged. We're doing this. All right. Any other citizens' comments? With there being none, we'll move forward to the consent agenda items. Under our consent agenda items, we have payroll and bill warrants. We have approval of open session minutes meetings for December 2, 2022, and December 13, 2022. Are there any items that should be pulled?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I didn't get this agenda until I sat down here. These items, I've not seen. I would be willing to, to discuss, vote on payroll, bill warrants, and so on, but I haven't looked at the minutes of the meetings. I haven't seen any of the other items that are on this agenda, although I think that there is another one for just a change of manager at, at a location, and I would be willing to deal with that. But I'd like to at least take a peek at the rest of this agenda and perhaps put off the rest of it aside from the budget until our next meeting.
Would you be in agreement to tabling one by one item?
I'd be willing to do them any way that you'd like, as long as we accomplish what I had suggested.
Okay. A motion to table approval of open meeting minutes, meeting of December 2, 2022.
So moved.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I vote aye as well. A motion to approve payroll?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Next is, taken out of order, is consent of refinancing of a local incentive program, LIP property. And I believe that is Pam McCarthy. Are you in agreement to hearing Ms. McCarthy's summary of what this actually is?
I'd be happy to listen to that, but I'm not happy in voting on it tonight because I haven't read it.
Okay. Ms. McCarthy, would you please step forward? State your name and your title.
Hi, I'm Pam McCarthy, the acting town planner and the director of Economic Development. This actually, I had passed in on Friday, and what, there's a little bit of urgency to this actual item because the town council was away for almost two weeks, and so he didn't get a chance to review this. So Friday morning, he actually got to review the paperwork. And there's a mortgage commitment for this property owner that's in danger of being lost, and their interest rate will go up if no action is taken on this tonight. So it's up to you whether or not you decide to, to vote to allow Chairperson Roberts to sign the consent letter. But I can really quickly explain what this is. So the consent letter allows the refinancing of a LIP project, which is a local incentive program, sometimes known as a Friendly 40B. This is part of the Pond Village condominiums. The address is 8 Onset Lane, Unit 68. And basically, what's happening is the owner of this property is trying to refinance in order to be able to afford home improvements. This is something that in the past, the town planner had handled. Some communities, it's the Housing Authority that handles requests like this. I did research along with people in the Engineering Department, Kristin and Craig Horzfall. We found the previous planner's paperwork and saw how he had drafted these requests. So on January 4, 2022, when, when Joseph McCrisky was the chairman of the board, he actually signed a similar letter granting permission for 81 Brewster Road to be refinanced. So this is the same thing. The difference is that this is a HELOC being used for refinancing. So what I did was, I drafted a letter based on previous letters that we had used, and I had town council review it. He reviewed it, and he just added the language on the second paragraph of the letter. He said he thought it would be fine. There would be no adverse implications to the town in signing this letter. But he said to include the language that said, "The vote of approval stipulated that consistent with the existing perpetual, perpetual affordable housing restriction upon this unit, the mortgage shall be subject to and subordinate to the restriction, and the town is requiring that it be sent a copy of the mortgage to confirm this." So this is basically something that's been done before, allowing someone that owns an affordable unit to refinance their property. And it's already been approved by DHCD. The approval is needed by DHCD as well as the town of Stoughton. So, and the bank has already provided the commitment. So the only holdup is the town of Stoughton. I understand that you just got this. You haven't seen it. So I, if you have to wait, I just have to explain to the bank and the property owner that, you know, they might actually have to lose their commitment. See, I can answer questions if you have any.
So when is the actual deadline? It's not today, but...
No, it's not today.
Would it wait until a week?
They, well, I just have been continually getting emails for the last couple of weeks asking what the holdup is. They're just waiting for the town. I know that it's, it's a matter of, I think, a week or so that they'll be losing. I don't have the exact date. They didn't supply me with it. But Brian Winter did say that he thought that the letter would be fine. He didn't see any issues with it. It's, you know, it's, it's something that's been done in the past. So if you did want to wait for another meeting, I don't think any of the information would be different.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. Mr. Coulter?
A minor point, Pam may have mentioned it. This is a very common procedure that the Department of Housing and Economic Development requires of municipalities that have Friendly 40Bs in their towns. The DHCD has already signed off on it. Usually, they wait until after we sign off on it, then they sign on it, sign off. They have already done so. It, it, it's not a new issue. It's, it's more of a formality. It was a last-minute request on us only because town council was out of town for the two weeks that they've been waiting for this. I would recommend consideration of this, notwithstanding Mr. Gito's concern that he hadn't got it in advance. I understand that. But it is a housekeeping issue. It's not major legislation or anything that we haven't got absolute precedent for doing. And DHCD, the state agency, has already done it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gito?
There is two pages in this package. I have no idea what this is. I haven't, I haven't seen one of these before. Maybe everyone else has. And I'm not going to vote on it. But anyone else can do whatever they choose. I expect to see the material ahead of time and have a chance to not only... and have a chance to not only see the material in the package, but to be able to look behind that material to find out what other things go with it. I've not seen one of these before. So I'm just going to sit here. If you want to vote on it, you go right ahead, or you can put it off for a week, and we can all make a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Vice Chair, Kevi?
Thanks, Ms. McCarthy. I have a couple of questions just to help me better understand this. But from what I'm seeing, basically, there's a property that, because of the fact that they have affordable housing requirements, they have to send this request through us, that what they're looking to do is to refinance and use a home equity line of credit to finance repairs. Correct? So our town council has weighed in and says there's no adverse, there'll be no adverse effect on the town. I have a little bit, I may have done one of these before. I'm a little bit surprised it's even coming in front of us because it just seems like somebody wants to borrow some money, and I don't really know what our role in all of this is. But I guess it is to, just to review this. But I feel like, is there anything else I'm missing here? It's just somebody that's trying to take out an equity line of credit, right?
No, it's been done multiple times in the past. Sometimes it's because there's a sale of the property, and sometimes it's because there's a refinance.
Yeah. And they're taking this out with a bank, correct? I'm assuming?
Yes, the bank has already...
Harbor One. Yeah, so Harbor One was in the package.
Harbor One out of Brockton.
Okay, yeah. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other questions and comments? What? Yes, I do. I would like to read this letter to make sure we're all on the same page. To whom it may concern, this is the letter I would be signing. At their meeting of January 3rd, 2023, the Stoughton Select Board voted to approve your request to refinance your home, utilizing a HELOC in order to fund home improvements at 8, is that, Onset Lane, Unit 68, Stoughton, Mass. 02072. The vote of approval stipulated that, consistent with the existing perpetual affordable housing restriction upon the unit, the mortgage shall be subject to and subordinate said restriction, and the town is requiring that it be sent a copy of the mortgage to confirm this. The consent is valid, subject to obtaining the prior written approval of the Department of Housing and Community Development and compliance with any and all terms thereof. By copy of this letter to that agency, we are confirming that the town of Stoughton has approved your request. So what is the wish of the board?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that the Select Board allow the chair to sign the document as presented.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, wait just a minute. Yes, please discuss. Mr. Carrera.
The person who's asking for this LIP, are they the owner and the person that's living in the property? Are they an owner, and they're looking to rent it after they
No, it's the owner that's living in the property.
Because the affordables are supposed to be perpetual, right?
Right. Yes, it has that restriction on it. In fact, I had Brian Winter read the rider to the deed that had all the stipulations.
I've done a couple of these before, and one went through, and one person ended up backing out of it. So it's coming back to me. But Lou, if you need more time?
All right. I'm just going to abstain from voting because I don't know anything about this, aside from that, these two pieces of paper. And anyone else can do what they choose. We generally, we generally see these things before or on Friday and have a chance to review them and do whatever research we want. We can, as a board, we can change that anytime we want to do it. And if that's what you want to do, then feel free.
That has always been our practice. Actually, we've been rehearsing to start getting the information out on Thursday. But an option, instead of voting tonight, we don't know what the deadline is, but we know that there is urgency. We can call a special meeting in a couple of days just for this one item.
Excuse, I did find, I'm sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair, the expected closing date was originally December 30th. So it's already past that. They've given an extension, that means, for the HELOC rate. So they were supposed to close on the 30th.
No time to stretch now.
So can you say that a little louder? The deadline was December 30th.
That was the expected closing date. They weren't able to do that because we weren't able to provide the consent letter. So if they went past the closing date, normally they're allowed to give an extension to the mortgage commitment for, sometimes, maybe a week or two. So they're past that. So it could only last a little bit longer, so.
Okay. Two days? Because that will give us two days to post for another meeting and for all of us to do a little research. So two days?
If that's what you desire. I told the bank I should be able to give them the letter I expected to tomorrow, but that would be a matter of another day or two. So hopefully, that's not an issue.
And then, Mr. Carrera, did you have something else to say in that?
No, I'm good.
Okay. So two days?
It's, I'm all right to vote. I understand it. I was just wondering...
Okay, then we're all ready to vote then. So there's a motion on the table. It has been seconded. So all in favor?
Aye.
I'll take this by roll call. Mr. Carrera?
Aye.
Vice Chair, Kevi?
Aye.
Mr. McCrisky?
Aye.
Mr. Gito? And I vote aye as well. So the motion passes.
I just want clarification. Is that the motion to approve you to sign the letter or to continue it for two days?
That's the motion to approve me to sign.
Okay, good.
Did you want to read back?
That was my motion. My motion was to allow the chair to sign the document as presented.
And that's what should be in our records. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All set.
So, Madam Chair, Pam, just to avoid any confusion, if the chair can sign that letter, will you take that this evening? Okay. Thank you.
If you, okay. You want to...
Just sign it now.
You want me to sign this now? We can take, let's take a two-minute break. If we have the letter, I can sign it right now. In the essence of time, and we have a change of manager, which is Carol Large. Is Carol Large in the audience? Okay, I'm just taking polls. So that's the only one that's left. Okay. Give me back in order of the agenda. It is Boston Studio Rental Owners, introduction of Giovanni and Diana Francis. If you could approach our table, introduce yourselves and your affiliation with Boston Studios, and also, ultimately, you're asking for a variance to our alcohol license. I would like for you, in your presentation to us in introduction, why do you believe the Select Board has authority to waive or to allow you to have a variance? That's the first question. In your presentation, if you could answer that.
We're just going to set up the presentation. Thank you, by the way.
I'm sorry, Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Two to three minutes tops, please, because we have a...
We have a presentation for about, we timed it around 10 minutes.
Okay, we don't have that much time. If you could just talk about your operation, answer the question, and show us visually what it is. We have a heavy agenda tonight.
Certainly.
Not a presentation. Talk about their operation. Yeah, here. And of course, I have my microphone on.
Okay.
So please state your name and your affiliation with the operation.
Certainly.
Are you a resident of the town of Stoughton?
We just purchased a building at 623 Wyman Street. I'm Giovanni, and this is my wife, Diana. And I've been a photographer for about 15 years now. I primarily do photography and video. I've been working at some of the most beautiful wedding venues across New England. Next slide, please. That's the Fairmount Copley Plaza, right there. While at these venues, I've been inspired by what looks beautiful and what people want. So I do a little bit of everything. As you can see, some of my work, next slide, families and graduations. And what we try to do is capture love stories and watch families grow. Now, I primarily teach photography and videography and help other photographers grow their business. Next slide. So we purchased the building back in August of 2021 for $755,000. By the way, again, this is right downtown in the heart of Stoughton. And we just completed a renovation for over $200,000, HVAC, systems, soundproofing, artwork. And the building has been vacant for almost a decade. We were under renovations for over a year, and our investment is over $1 million at this time. And we just opened up in October. Next slide, please. So some of the services that we offer are photography and studio rentals for photographers around New England. Also, again, I teach, but primarily, one of our service offerings are function hall rentals. And that's a big part of our business. We also have movie theater rentals, holiday mini sessions, and creative space. I'm on a run. I'm speeding up. So here's a slide right there. This is one of our largest rooms right here. Now, this is called the large room, and within this room, our slogan is this, "A blank slate to bring any creative vision to life." And so, a person literally, let me pull this up. Give me a second. So a person can literally rent the space for dance rehearsals, book clubs, a cappella group practice, meetings, interviews, and much more. Very artistic space. Next slide, please. So as you can see on the screen, the room, the space has three large rooms. So a medium room, small, and large. And within these rooms, they're separated by closets. And the maximum capacity of our largest room is only 50 people. So which basically, we want to focus on small, next slide, y'all perfect. We want to focus on small, focus on small, controlled, private events for families and friends. Our rooms are perfect for those that don't have enough space in their house. And on the top right, you can actually see a wedding reception. And on the bottom right, you can see a gender reveal party. So perfect place for functions. Now, we want small baby showers, and we're trying to create a classy, elegant establishment for Stoughton. And for baby showers, family reunions, small dinners, bridal showers, wedding receptions, baptisms, gender reveals. Now, what is not allowed are general emissions, no ticket sales, no admission fees, no cover charges, no raves, or no nightclub-style events. In our function hall contracts, we actually have a term that states you must serve a three-course meal. And then on top of that, you must personally know and be responsible for all of your guests. No disruptive behavior, no loud noise outside, in the parking lot, or surrounding areas as permitted. I'm going to hand this over to Diana.
Thank you.
So I just want to interject that about our time, our time commitment. So if you could just talk to us a little bit more about why you believe we have authority to change our alcohol policy.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
If I may, I'm uncomfortable sitting here and watching you go through this. And I don't know if there's any crucial deadline that we're dealing with. I don't think there is. Why wouldn't we have you come back to another meeting so you can do what you wanted to do coming before this board? Unless you want to sit here and get a decision tonight, I don't know if we even have a decision we can make. But I just feel bad seeing you. I know you're prepared. And, you know, to be jumping through this and not getting your information across, I don't think it serves either side of us. You know, it serves you or it serves us to come in with this thing and really not get the full presentation. I'd rather see suitable time be put on the agenda so that you can make your case. You have a right to be heard. And the way this is going, I don't feel comfortable. I want to give you the opportunity to state your case, say what you have to say before this board. So it's through you, Madam Chair. It's up to you, folks. If you want to just keep moving forward, that's totally up to you. Madam Chair, the town manager has his hand up.
Yeah, and also, Mr. Carrera, okay? Go first, Tom, Mr.?
Madam Chair, I agree with Mr. McCrisky. And the reason is, I've heard this presentation, myself and the Assistant Town Manager have heard this presentation. I agree with Joe. It's not fair to them, and it's not fair to you to get the full flavor of what they're offering. I think I can answer the question that you answered for me. What is the basis for looking for a variance? And they believe that their business was never intended to fall under this rule the committee passed, the committee, the board passed, to ban this type of private intimate gathering. So I think it is wise, if the applicants are okay with this, to set it up for another meeting where they can take the time and make their case for why they believe them getting caught up in this is an unintended consequence. It may not be, that may not be the decision of the board. But I think Joe is right, that everybody would benefit from a full-throated presentation. That's my thought, Madam Chair.
Mr. Giovanni is, would you like to do that? Come back at another time, or would you like to proceed?
Absolutely, I just want to, I appreciate your recommendation. Today, we just wanted to introduce ourselves and just let you know who we are and just basically give you an introduction. If I can just, like Mr. Coulter said, is... You know, we hope that you have a good understanding of our business. And our business plan, which is on the next page, it points out that when we went to the bank, we originally wanted to create a unique business that helps photographers and videographers and also provides function halls. That was what we planned from the start. And when we purchased the building, the regulation wasn't put into effect. You know, it was put into effect August this year, but we purchased the building the prior August in 2021. So if I can just read this last point, it would mean a lot. So we hope that this presentation gave you a good understanding of our business. We invite the Honorable Select Board to visit and tour our studio. We would love for you to see it yourself later this evening. We would ask you to approve our two one-day liquor license applications. Should you approve, we humbly ask in the future meetings that you consider a variance, as we don't think you intended this regulation to apply for our business. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions for us, please?
So my fellow Select Board members, do you have any questions? Yes, Vice Chair Cavey.
So thank you very much for taking the time to come visit us. Really appreciate the presentation, getting to know you better. I was excited, actually, to hear about the business when I first saw some of the materials. I don't want to minimize this or misrepresent it. But what I saw, at least the picture and the marketing that you had, reminded me a little bit more of like, almost like what you'd expect from a hotel function room, where you could have like, you know, bridal showers, there could be christenings, things like that, sort of family events, retirement parties, things along those lines. And you had a venue to do that, and a nice facility, and people could do different things. I saw a movie theater in there, so if you wanted to have, you know, a kid's birthday party, you could have that and show movie, or something like that. So the idea that you'd want to tack on to this, also the ability to sell liquor, beer, alcohol, wine, whatever, made sense to me, in the same way that you'd expect it from a lot of those other types of situations. And we actually get requests like that from hotels periodically, when they have, you know, some sort of a wedding party or something, and they want to sell beer and wine. So nothing that you've said really, like, I find very controversial. It all sounds like a pretty good idea to me. And I would support, you know, that we make an amendment to accommodate the kind of business model that you're running. You know, the types of problems that I think that our policies attempt to avoid really don't apply here. So I would say with probably almost no, probably very few exceptions, if any. Though I do have one question, just to make sure I kind of understand this all better.
Yes, sir.
What are your hours of business?
Certainly. We typically, well, we will close at midnight. That's when everybody must be out the door, is midnight. But myself, I'm a workaholic, so if somebody wants to rent the place to do a major studio shoot, or if they want a kid's birthday party, you know, from morning up to midnight. But typically, we wind down right around 10:30, just so as everything. And again, we put mountains and mountains of sheet rock and different layers of soundproofing. It's whisper quiet from outside, you can barely hear anything. And then we really want to hold all of our clientele accountable in making sure that the host is responsible. In our contract, we detail it quite in depth. We actually, in October, had sent over a letter. I don't know if you got a chance to check it out, but absolutely. We want to respect Stoughton, and we want to make sure that Stoughton can become a beacon of exemplary, you know, greatness. So, and that's from entertainment all the way to just patronage. And being that we're right in downtown, I think we've done a good job in that aspect thus far.
Yeah, and with, so going forward, are you looking for a full alcohol license or just the ability to get one-day alcohol licenses as you need them? I'll repeat. Going forward, are you looking to get one-day liquor licenses as you need them? Or are you looking to get like a full all-alcohol license?
So we actually prefer not to do one-day liquor license, as we don't want to obfuscate what the state is having in place. We just, we would like a full liquor license. But we were just, we understand that there was pressure under Select Board, and we just wanted to get the ball rolling. So that's why we applied for the one-day liquor license. But going forward, we would like to commit to a full liquor license and do right by the town.
I think there might be, I don't recall what it is, but I think there might be a limit on the number of one-day liquor licenses that you can get.
I believe it's 33.
33 in the year. So that makes sense, but I think...
Sorry.
If I can, the number 33, I don't think exists unless you've got a document from the ABCC that shows that. Because if my colleagues will remember, when we had a problem when the golf course was going in, we started giving out multiple licenses. We didn't even make it until to the number 10, when the ABCC notifies us and told us that you cannot use one-day licenses to make up for the lack of a full license. So I don't know where that number 33 come up. But if you've got a document that shows me that, I'll call the ABCC myself. Because they'd be contradicting what they told this board earlier.
Certainly, certainly, and I do apologize.
No need to apologize, it just could be a number that somebody gave you, but that's why I'm bringing it up. Because I know I was chair, I was the one that got that very uncomfortable call. And believe me, I don't want one of those again.
Certainly.
They weren't pleasant on the phone, I can tell you that.
Yeah, yeah, well, I had the same recollection of there being somewhere in the 30s. So I, and I don't remember where I heard that from. For all I know, I dreamt it. So, but, no, I understand, not held responsible for that. But, so I don't have any other questions. I definitely appreciate you taking the time to introduce yourselves. And I also want to thank you for picking Stone as a place to do business. And hopefully, we're working all this out, and you guys could be prosperous in our town. And thank you very much.
I really appreciate that. Thank you so much, sir. And thank you.
Thank you so very much. I think Mr. Carrera had a question for you as well.
Are you on site when this stuff is going on? Are you there, or?
I am there whenever a customer is there. I'm always on site, at least for the first 10 years. I just want to make sure that no problems happen. And by the way, we had a studio in Braintree as well. And we just want to make sure that we can continue our great reputation. Within our Google profiles, Yelp profiles, we literally only have five-star reviews. No four-star, no three-star. I come from a customer service background, and I just want to give a good product and a good service. So yes, I will be on site. Thank you, sir.
The only thing I think he's missing is the stairway from the Chateau de Ville. But I do think that he can get a full liquor license. We have the downtown liquor license. There was, what, six or nine PM that were chosen extra for downtown?
Yeah, we had additional five approved a couple of years ago by Town Manager.
So I wouldn't wait.
I appreciate that, sir. And that's, again, that's one of the reasons why we chose to make an investment like this. We did extensive due diligence. We called everybody we can get, we can call. We went through our lawyers, we went through our accountant, we went through consultants. We have extensive, 15 years in the game, just, and we wanted to make sure that we weren't throwing our life down the drain. You know, we mortgaged pretty much everything to make it happen.
But I agree with Mr. McCrisky and the Town Manager, Mr. Coulter, that I'd like to see you come back so you could have your time to lay it right out.
I appreciate that, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I would like for you to come back as well, so you could have, before you come back, I would like to take a tour of your facility. I would like to take you up on your offer, because it looks so luxurious. It looks like a premier organization, and I want to see it for myself. I did have some questions for you related to if there is room for you to have a kitchen there and so you can keep food hot. But I think that's too far in advance. We have to wait and see what you would like to do. And I was glad to hear that you did want to get a full liquor license and not just a one day. But to go through the whole process, we have the police department that comes in, and we have the Board of Health that comes in and look, but that's after you apply for the full alcohol license, so full liquor license.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. It's so nice meeting you, and welcome to the town.
Thank you so much for having us.
Mr. Gito.
I'm not sure that I understand what the legal problems are with granting a license to an organization like this. I thought that I heard that we may not be able to do that because it was a change of policy. And if that's so, I would like to know whether or not our Town Council could weigh in on that issue. If it's just a matter of our granting a license to an applicant, that's one thing. But I heard that it was something else when I heard the initial presentation. So if we're going to have something else on this, I guess I would like to know what the competing issues are before we hear that. And so that we can deal with the, with whatever issues are there and not have to sort of wing it.
Mr. Gito, we've actually tried to expedite our presentation, but that was about two to three pages. We'll make sure to hit on that if we come back, if that's...
I don't see it in this application. I don't see it in front of me. And if everybody else has seen it, then shame on me, but...
Our digital presentation, excuse me.
Then please send me a copy of that. Thank you.
Certainly.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Coulter.
I know you want to move this along, so may I suggest that I will work with the applicant, with Town Council, and determine what it is exactly they're looking for and what the issues are that prevents us at this moment from voting on that. How about if I write a position paper, getting the input from Mr. McCrisky and others as to what the issues are? Get it to you, and then schedule a meeting. And during that time, see if I can schedule some tours of the facility. So we're better prepared. What's happened here is you're caught up in the wash of our budget deliberations.
Certainly.
We've got 30 department heads here at 9 o'clock to present, and I can feel, to Joe's point, and it's nothing to fear us. There's a sense that we got to get on with getting our budget done, because that's stipulated by our charter.
Certainly.
You deserve a fair hearing, and I have a responsibility to lay out the issues for the board so that they know what it is they're considering.
Certainly.
I'll work with you to put that together.
Very appreciative, Mr. Coulter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Appreciate your time, Select Board.
Bye-bye.
Oh, yes, we, just the final piece is, we also applied for two one-day liquor licenses. We were hoping to get those approved for the 7th, this Saturday, and the following 7th, I mean, the following seven days, on the 14th. We have submitted those quite a while ago. And we're just hoping that you can just vote on those as well, please?
So in all honesty and fairness, we're not prepared to vote on anything at this time. What we're dealing with for, and I think we alluded to it instead of saying it out directly, is that within our policy, we don't have a waiver provision. There's not one in the policy that's online that was voted on and approved. The other thing is, you started out with, you know, the one-day licenses. And based on our mission and our strategy, we wanted to save those licenses for restaurants, so full-blown out. So this is what you're hearing. We're trying to decide if we're changing direction, but I don't think so. Also, is if you do apply for a full license, full alcohol license or liquor license, then it has to go through another operational steps. So you have more departments that are reviewing your, the mechanics and the occupancy and the whole bit. So it's bigger than just us saying, well, yeah, you can do this, because there is a lot to consider. But going back to the first thing that I said, is in our policy, as it stands today, there is no waiver provision.
Oh, I apologize. It could have been me. So about a month or two ago, we paid the town clerk $50 for one-day liquor licenses for these specific dates. And it went through the entire department heads. And then they approved that, and then they said, once that's approved, then the board will vote on that. That's what I'm referencing, not, my presentation was just to introduce ourselves and then hopefully get approved for those two one-day liquor licenses that we initially purchased, or paid the fee for. I apologize.
I apologize too. Very interesting. We don't have that paperwork.
Then I think we should return the $50 to them.
Yes.
That's a motion.
Okay, can I get a second on that motion? I didn't hear someone second that motion. All in favor, and that is returning. This is all in favor. Just a minute. There's a motion on the table that has been seconded.
I gotta ask a question.
Yes, please do, Mr. Carr.
In the packet, he has all these check-offs from department heads for the one-day alcoholics. We're not going to approve those? I think that's what he was talking about. It's all the departments, it's like he has two dates, and then...
So we have a lot going on, Mr. Carr. One thing that was going on is, and I'm gonna just be honest, because this seems to be an honest night. Information wasn't distributed to all of the board members.
Oh, okay.
So...
Okay.
That's what we have.
Well, it seems to me there are two or three things going on here, in all candor. One is, we didn't get the information. Two is that we accepted an application that apparently is not within our powers to deal with, because we have a policy that won't allow us to grant a license for alcohol. So I mean, if both of those things are there, these people, we may have gone through part of the process, but they should have known that they couldn't apply and shouldn't have paid the $50 and wasted their time. have paid the $50 and, and wasted their time.
Yes, and, yes, you're, you're correct. Mm-hmm. So we, we do need to work on this process a little bit more. So our apologies, and I will come by to review and take my tour as you suggested.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. The next on our agenda, moving right along, is a change of manager, Carol Larch. Michael Romanek, Post 837 Washington Street. If you're still in the audience, please step forward and have a seat. Introduce yourself by stating your name and your affiliation with the organization.
Sorry, sir, could you turn me the microphone on? There's a button right in the bottom. There you go. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Jim Kelly. I'm the commander of the VFW Post here in Stoughton for the last few years. I'm a 35-year resident of the town of Stoughton, and, um, we made a decision that, um, you know, we, we have a bartender here. Carol's worked at the VFW for probably 40 years, and we're just doing a change of manager for the bar. And in order to comply with state town regulation, we have come from the board here and tell you, um, you know, we have somebody that feels more than qualified with all the years of her experience, and she's ready, willing, and able to, um, continue the process of taking care of veterans here in the town of Stoughton. Carol?
Hi, I'm Carol Larch. I live 46th School Ave. here in Stoughton, and I've been working at the VFW over 40 years. Hopefully, everything will go good for us tonight.
It is so nice meeting you, and thank you for your patience with this process.
Okay, I'm very sorry. I've had a cochlear implant on, and I am having a problem understanding you. If possible, I would like Jim to help me, please.
She said, "Thank you."
Great. Do my fellow board members have any questions for Carol Larch?
Madam Chair.
Um, Mr. McCrisky?
Not a question, not a comment. I've known Sergeant Major Kelly for a zillion years, and, um, if folks remember when we had a recruiting station in downtown Stoughton for a while, that was his baby there and, and brought some good use to a vacant building. But Jim, I'm just going to say here from this table, you know, and I've said this to you before, I commend you and the folks at your work, and Brian Turner and a few other people. Some folks may not know it, but, uh, this gentleman here tonight and the people he's working with, Brian Turner, another Stoughton resident, born and raised, have basically saved the VFW from what could have been extinction. You know, it's, it's difficult, you know, with the building and the use at the time, COVID, declining membership, you know, and, um, they've got this place that I was told one day, it's inevitable, it's going to be closing. And when you think of it as a townie, like a lot of us are, and you think of not seeing the VFW anymore, it was just not a comfortable thought for me personally. So I just want to say thank you to you and everybody over there that has got this place so it's moving forward, and you're taking in associate members and so forth, which I will be joining as well. But thanks, Jim, you know, for everything you guys and folks and ladies are doing over there. It's a great job.
I thank you, Joe, and thank the board. You know, it's a team effort. It's everybody is in the fight over there to save the post, so, and we thank you.
Takes leadership, too.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Carol? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Have a good evening. The next item on our agenda is the MCAT sewer easement agreement, and that's an easement for Page Street and Maple Street. A turn, motion to table that, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor to table?
No. No.
No. Please step forward, Mr. Cremmons. This is for MCAT sewer easement agreement, Page Street and Maple Street. State your name and your affiliation with, um, with the request.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Cremmons. Point of order, Madam Chair, just to note, Mr. Tisdale, who worked on this, is with us this evening.
Oh, okay, Mr. Tisdale is online?
Yes, he is.
Oh, great, great to know. Please, Mr. Cremmons, yes?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, members of the board, and Mr. Coulter. Happy New Year, everyone. Good to, good to see everybody. I'm Attorney Barry Cremmons of 909 Washington Street, here on behalf of, technical name is Milton Real Properties of Massachusetts LLC, doing business as Milton CAT. Also on the call, in addition to Mr. Tisdale, is my client, Mr. Brad Farron. You see him in the upper right-hand column. And I believe our project engineer, Gary Collette, from Colby Engineering, is on the call as well. So hopefully, they will bail me out if the members have any technical questions on, on this matter. As Mr. Coulter mentioned, the agreement you have before you, and I trust you, you do have the, the proposed agreement.
We got it at seven o'clock, 7:30 this evening.
Okay, because I know it was in the packet.
That's the reason that I asked.
Some of us were.
Okay. I do, I do know it was in the packet when I saw the agenda last week, so, in any event, hopefully, hopefully that's not an issue that will prevent us from, from going forward tonight. Milton CAT, just very quickly, I know you have your budget tonight. Milton CAT purchased the property at 245 Page Street, the former J.F. White property. It's about a six-and-a-half acre site up on Page Street. If you were to take Maple up to the top of Page and take a right, it's down on the left-hand side there, just before the Route 24 overpass, just to give you a frame of reference. Milton CAT proposes to have one of its Caterpillar equipment facilities at this location. If you're not, I think most of you, I'm sure, are familiar with the Caterpillar brand. I think it will be a welcome addition to the town. They've gone through all of the permitting otherwise required of this project, special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, site plan approval from the Planning Board. That all took place in the, mostly in the 2021 timeframe. Later in 2022, uh, we, uh, entered into negotiations with the town, which resulted in this sewer easement agreement. As Mr. Coulter said, Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Horstfall, and Mr. Nolan from the Engineering Department all assisted on this matter. It was, this agreement was also reviewed and approved by town council. The agreement you have before you, at least, uh, my copy, has already been signed by my client, so should the board see fit to approve this agreement tonight? It would just need the signatures of the board, and then we would record it at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. The essence of the agreement, I don't want to get into a technical discussion, but it's an easement within the Page Street right of way from the Milton CAT property up to Maple Street. It provides for Milton CAT to construct, um, the sewer line along, along that area. It also provides that Milton CAT is going to provide four laterals to other private property owners along that area so that if they were to choose to connect to the sewer line, the public sewer line, they will have the ability to do so without us having to open up Page Street again. So it'll only have to be opened up for the construction of the sewer line. The laterals will be constructed to those properties again so that if they wish to connect. So, um, I don't know how much, and my sense is you don't want me to go into a lot more detail than that. I'm happy to answer any questions that the members may have. And again, we have both representatives from the town as well as my client and our engineering firm, if there are any technical questions that any of the members may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cremmons. Mr. Coulter?
Madam Chair, Mr. Tisdale briefed me in 30 seconds today, and it became crystal clear, so perhaps for the benefit of the board, we would like him to describe what exactly we're doing from a macro level.
Yes, Mr. Tisdale, can you do that? Can you describe, give us a summary at a macro level?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, loud and clear.
Okay. I apologize I could not be there tonight. Unfortunately, the COVID got the best of me, so, um, I'm here in my Patriot hoodie. So yes, I can explain to you generally what is going on with this project. The project's received site point review through the planning board. Condition of the approval through the planning board was to connect to municipal sewer. There's unsuitable soils on this property. It's a very poor area for soils, and for this type of use, you would obviously want a sewer connection over a septic system. It's a forced main connection, which means they have a pump on their property. The elevation on the property is lower than where the sewer is in the street currently, so they have to pump from their property up to the street and then still pump in the street to get to a gravity sewer manhole that's shown on the plan. I believe it's called sewer manhole tool, uh, sewer manhole two. The town generally does not like one or two properties, um, pumping a forced main, having a forced main in our public right-of-ways. Because if there's ever an issue, there's no clean-cut distinction of where the issue is, and then we sometimes need approval to go on private property to look at, is it the pump that's causing the issue? Is it, you know, a number of issues that, you know, can occur, and there's no clean break. So typically, we like to break it where it pumps into the gravity manhole, and at that point, it's a, uh, there's no easement. It's, it's a public sewer in our right-of-way, and that's what the plan shows. So council's reviewed all the conditions in the easement. There's an O&amp;M plan that they're required to have for their forced main portion of the project. So we, as an engineering department, support this application and have no further comments.
Pretty good. Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Will this deal with all of the sewer issues that are likely to occur in that area, or is it just for this one property? And if it is just for this one property, what are the other concerns in that area?
That's a great question, uh, great question, Mr. Gito. There's a stub, uh, that is going further to the south. The forced main is designed to handle more flow for that area. There are not a ton of more properties that could tie into this particular forced main. There is another property that has a larger, um, development that's going through the Planning Board currently for the warehouse down south that is going to tie into sewer in, in a different fashion and a different area. It's going to be all gravity. So there's only one or two more properties south of this that would actually be able to tie into this forced main, and it is sized appropriately for those flows.
And then all of the properties will be able to be serviced?
Correct.
Or just the ones that can tie into this particular forced main?
All the properties that are located south of this that would have the ability to tie into this forced main would, would be able to, and the forced main is sized to accommodate those flows based on the zoning in the area.
And will this take care, well, not this, but will, there's another very large project in, in that area. Is anything that we're doing here making it more difficult for that? I seem to have gone off the air here.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good question. That project is providing sewer, municipal sewer, and it's tying into sewer in a different spot. It is not feasible for that project to pump all the way up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Uh, Mr. Carr?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Through, through you to, um, Mr. Tisdale, the town engineer. On page two mark of this agreement, under section four, it says, "Upon cle, upon completion of the installation and construction of the new sewer line, the gravity line shall become part of the public sewer system, and the town shall be responsible for maintaining, repairing, and replacing it at its sole cost and expense, the gravity line." Can we put language in there that equates to, uh, when, when a sewer line goes into the town roadway, that they are responsible for one year for the, um, the workmanship on that? Like if something happens, the, the town isn't going to take responsibility of, of that line or the trench for a year?
Um, I mean, I'm sure we could put language like that into it.
No, that's, that's the language. That's what goes with being a licensed contractor and putting that in the roadway. We, you own the pipe that's there, and then when it, when the year goes by, then it becomes the town's property.
Right. So for the, under the license, as being a licensed contractor, you're responsible for that, that pipe for a year. So if you wanted to duplicate that type of language in this, in this agreement, I'm sure you could. It's kind of saying things twice, though.
Well, this, this, this says, if you read it, it says that the town, the second that goes in, we're going to take and be responsible for it. You know what I mean?
Madam, Madam Chairperson, if I may just also add one thing to Mr. Carr's question, if, if I may.
Yes, and then, uh, Mr. McCrisky, after you.
Right. So, uh, Mr. Carr was referring to item number four at the bottom of page two, but if you also look at item number five, that, item number four references the town being responsible for the maintenance of the gravity line. Item number five, if you notice, has Milton CAT being responsible for the forced main.
Yeah. The forced, the forced main is theirs because it's being pumped.
Right.
When it hits the gravity line, it goes, I think it's 60, 80 feet, and, and that, that's what I'm worried about there.
Okay.
When, when a contractor puts it in, they're responsible for it for a year, for the trench and the workmanship that's in there. That's all I want to cover is because the truck traffic in that roadway is horrendous. And if, you know, nobody's there every minute of the day looking at pipe because that roadway has to be plated, and those poor guys have to get their stuff going. They can't just wait for an inspection, you know? Things got to be in, but I just want the town to be covered that it, the fourth month or something, and something happens, and they point at this, and they say, "Well, that, we did what you said. We put the gravity in, you own it." All, all licensed contractors, Milton CAT might not be the licensed contractor putting it in, but it should be in here and addressed. If they, if you don't want, if people don't want to, then that's fine, but I'm just looking out for the town and Milton CAT.
I personally do not have a problem with putting that condition in this agreement as long as Milton CAT does not object to it.
Before we go on with that, Mr. McCrisky, did you have something, a comment in line with this, or should we take Mr. Cremmons next and then come to you?
No, no, because I, I just want the question answered. Is this a part of our existing sewer policy now? Why are we, are we changing this on this case? I don't, I hope that's not what we're doing. Is this something that we do every time somebody hooks into a sewer line? Do they have that same requirement? Because I, I'm smelling that we're doing it here, but we may not have done it in other places. Am I correct? Anybody, Mark, can you answer that? Have we done this before?
Yeah, for licensed contractors, they're responsible for their work. If there's settlement in trenches after they install it, they are required to go fix the settlement in the trench. We usually have a policy of up to one year for that requirement.
Okay, so this is something consistent with what we've done in the past?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
With that said, Mr. With that said, Mr. Attorney Cremmons?
Yes, thank, I'm not sure why it's coming back to me.
Oh, I, because you were going to make a comment and then I allowed my fellow board member, Mr. McCrisky, to ask a question in line with that same.
Thank you. I think it went to Mr. Carrera's request to have that condition put into the agreement. I think, I don't think my client will have an issue with that. But if I could just ask Mr. Farron if he could indicate if he's okay with that condition being added. He's indicated he's okay with that condition. So we have no problem with that, Madam Chairperson.
Great, okay, done. Any other questions or anything you would like to share further, Mr. Tisdale?
Nope, nothing further.
Okay, with that said, then.
Motion to approve the agreement.
Motion to approve with the condition on page two.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes.
Thank you very much. Again, I'd like to thank not only the board, but again, the engineering department and town council for their, for their assistance in getting this agreement done. If I, if I may just quickly go back to Mr. Cavie's comment at the start of the meeting, I would welcome any cooperative effort towards that senior housing project. As I think you all know, that's an area that's near and dear to my heart. And I think I speak for all my colleagues on the Stoughton Housing Authority, would be happy to work with you. We are working in a similar direction, but would be happy to work with you and the rest of the board towards creating any additional senior housing that we possibly can. So I.
My very short list of people to call, so I'm very grateful to hear that.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Procedurally, we'll, we'll make that change to the agreement. I guess I'll get it to Mr. Coulter.
Yes.
And we can arrange for signatures.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Have a wonderful evening. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you all. You're all welcome to visit the site.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Tisdale, as well. Let's move right along to our fiscal year 2024 operating and capital budget. We have our department heads in the audience. Before we start, are there any changes, Mr. Coulter, from our last conversation? Also, you did distribute the, the organization chart, so we have a great idea of the, the scope and span of control. Also, from what I view, that you decided to separate economic development and planning now. So is that one of the changes? Or please just state what the changes are.
And then we'll go from there. It's still listed as, as, as two line items in the budget. Mark and I are still discussing it with Pam. We're going to meet again on Thursday to determine, by video, to determine what the best way is to accomplish both. Both are funded. Both positions are funded in this budget. How we use the money, Mark and Pam and I are still discussing it. In response to your question, Madam Chair, this is the same budget you had in front of you last week. The changes that we've noted, that board members have requested, excuse me, is a line item in the town managers budget requested by Mr. Gito for professional development of staff. We talk a lot about it, but there was no specific funding line item for it. There's been discussion about increasing the diversity consultant value. And the board needs just to decide on that. An open issue, I've got zero new firemen on board. I've invited the chief and the deputy to discuss that with the board directly. And whatever the board decides, we'll change the budget. They make a good argument. My decision was based on a lack of additional funding to do it. There's a $30,000 line item we will be adding to the budget again at the request of Mr. Gito and the vote of the board for downtown beautification. There is already a $70,000 line item budget there for design and engineering for the new parking lot beautification of town hall. But the request was to include the downtown in that request. And then to put a dollar amount for the 300 celebration article that's in your package that's not funded right now, but the article has got a placeholder. Those are the changes I've recorded that the board members sought to add to. And I know some of the board members have issues on issues they would like to decrease. So I'm going to take notes. And then at the end, I would ask that the board, we're going to do the same thing next week with the other half of the town managers. We don't need votes tonight. But what we need is, is feedback in terms of what other changes you're seeking and any questions you may have of the department heads. But those are the differences to this budget.
Yes, Mr. Rowe?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a slight clerical error. Under police, the patrolman line, I believe what you have may, may say for FTEs, 52.5, it should be 54. The chief called us to correct that. So it should be 54 FTEs, 54 employees. Yep. If you want to make that, make a note of that. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Coulter, how did you want to proceed? Or are you recommending we start with the presenters, like the fire and deputy fire chief or?
At, at the risk of angering the chief, I like your, your direction earlier. If we could go through the departments that are for tonight and those that we have no questions, recommendations, or elsewhere, just then dismiss them from the call and then get right to the presentation that the fire chief has. I agree with your, for your earlier recommendation.
Okay. I like that approach myself.
So of the, of the groups that are supposed to be here this evening, if, Madam Chair, would you like me to read the groups that are here and, and they either hold?
Oh, yes, please do.
Hold or, or stay, leave or towards they choose. So for the January 3 meeting, the budgets and articles with department heads, first is police. I assume that's a hold?
Yes, hold, please, please.
Crossing guards. Animal control. Dispatches.
Oh, just a minute, Mr. Coulter.
Crossing guards.
Crossing guards, hold.
You want to hold?
I can ask a question.
Yeah, we're going to ask a question. These are the ones we're going to ask the question. We're asking all other department heads to leave once we go through the list. Uh huh, yep.
Animal control. Dispatches. Fire.
Yes.
It's a hold.
Hold.
Public works. And that includes highway facilities, snow removal, street lighting, fleet maintenance, waste disposal, sanitation. So they're all a hold. Water and sewage. Development services, engineering, planning, board of health, building, economic development. Okay, library. So if I've got it correct, the ones we are holding for the meeting of January 3, the police, crossing guards, animal control, dispatches, strike that, police, crossing guards, fire, public works, water and sewage. Yes, it is. Okay. I am. Yep.
So that means that everyone else is dismissed?
That's correct. Everyone else is dismissed. And perhaps if we, we go in this order, the only presentation I'm aware of is, is the fire department. The others are available for questions from the board.
Or less.
Chief, we just saw how long the three minute presentation.
I figured you're good to go. Nobody's going to stop you, chief.
Thank you, folks. We appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
So if that's the case, the police would be first. Madam Chair, I'm presuming I should facilitate this if you'd like to.
Yes, I asked that you facilitate this.
Okay, for the police department, are there any questions of the chief? Strike that. The chief did give us notice right before this meeting that she's asked to be put to next Tuesday because of what she's dealing with within her own department right now. She was meeting with shift changes this evening. So the police are going to be on next Tuesday's agenda. I should have said that before I called them up.
Okay.
So that's a hold until next Tuesday, the 10th. Now, Mark, are you still on? Well, Bill, I don't know why.
I, I left.
Hi, Mark. Why are crossing guards on there? I mean, they're, they're part of, they're part of the police department. Why are they on there as a specific? I'm sorry? Oh, I forgive me then. Thank you. Thanks, Mark. So everything above that is fire. It's late. The next one is fire. Chief, I'm sorry, I keep calling you out. Let's get through the questions for the others, then we'll do your presentation. The next one is public works. Questions for Paul? Questions for public works? You can do capital and operating budget. We're going to come back to the presentation for fire once we answer questions. Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Carrera has the first question?
Through you, Madam Chairman, to Mr. Jafum, the superintendent. I, I see you have the truck in the, in the hot box and stuff like that. I was wondering if, with the way things are that, I assume that the hot box you got is so-so? The hot top box is so-so currently?
So-so would be putting it nicely. Definitely needs replacement.
With, with what's going on with your reconforming and, and I, I do agree with the utility trucks because for years I've said I can't believe how they work out of the back of three, three, one-ton dump trucks, you know, reaching up and without having their boxes and all their tools. So I agree with replacing them and proper and stuff. I think we should skip the 650 Ford and maybe Paul, you and Richie could put together a price on a, on a hot box and we'll enter that in and go that way?
Uh, yeah, excuse me.
Because that'll free up one foreman's truck to possibly pull that trailer.
I mean, with that thinking, we could free up one of those one tons that are, one, two of the foremen are currently in and purchase a tow behind hot box would certainly save some money. We can, we'll certainly take a look at that and get back to you.
That, that, that was my concern. And the only other concern I had was with the, the combination of that fleet management facilities. What I've learned in my experience of stuff is usually a fleet guy that's going to be like that is usually like a retired mechanic ready to step out into the pasture because he doesn't want to wrench anymore. And he knows about the trucks and stuff and, you know, keeping a, when I hear fleet, fleet is like you either buy all Fords or you buy all Chevys, whatever's giving you the best bang. And a guy like that has got to know. And to put those two together with somebody with your experience that facilities, it doesn't seem that a fleet guy who's buying trucks is going to know wallpaper and paint. I just, I can't see putting those two together. And Paul's job was actually that. And I thought that was going to carry through. At least he, it just seemed like that was just part of what public works was going to be. We were told by the former town manager that facilities was going to be moved over there because that's the way it was going to be. I didn't know we were going to create something like that. And I just, I, fleet person, yeah. But I can't see those two together. That, that, it doesn't make sense.
So within internal discussions before Mr. Coulter was here with Mr. Tisdale, we went over those concerns, had a lot of discussion. We've rethought that. And you're right about fleet manager. So we labeled this position for the current budget. And it's not a new position. It's just a, a reorganization. It, it's going to take the place of the associate public work superintendent. So it's, it's not a brand new position, but we've relabeled that, or renamed that, retitled that position, fleet manager and facilities assistant. Based on kind of what you just said, Mr. Carrera, and discussions with others and internal discussions, I kind of just need someone to do the little stuffs with the, the little things with the facilities. Certainly, I believe you alluded to it. Dr. Grimm said facilities would go down to public works. I would still take care of that, which has been going on. We've continued that. We will continue to do that. Basically, you know, and we're trying to get the fleet under control, as many of you know, as Mr. Coulter has certainly jumped into this and realized we need to get that under control. We're working at it. We're trying that. The fleet manager certainly takes precedence in my mind, and I think others' minds, that that is more important than a facilities manager. So again, we've rethought that and really just, I'm really just looking for someone to help me out with certain things with facilities, whether it be phone calls, scheduling, things like that, not necessarily long-term planning. So there will be certainly a larger emphasis on the fleet manager. I don't know if that addresses your concerns, but.
We'll, we'll, we'll just look and see how it goes.
I want to make sure I understand you clearly, Scott. With respect to, is your concern that one person is doing both jobs and that they're mutually exclusive?
I want, I want what's best for the public works. I want a guy that's focused on, on, I mean, the police department picks their own cruises. The, the chief knows what she wants. She has that stuff. They pull out a file and it's in there. That's what a fleet manager does. He, he keeps the files like that. He focuses on talking to other fleet managers in different towns and, and working deals where they go, if we're going to buy two utility bodies, we're not going to buy that at this amount. We're going to go in, we're going to see if we can go in with Easton. They're buying one. And then you, you broker deals like that. Those are guys that have been in the business, like Joe will, will agree with me, who Rocky Loomis was, that guy knew everything there was to know about Max. Anybody that was a fleet guy went to him. This is what you need with the amount of equipment we got. I don't think we can put those two together.
Okay.
Because facilities is a whole basket in itself, you know? And I, I don't want to burden Paul with, with much more than he, than he has. But we got to figure out, a fleet manager and facilities just doesn't go together. It just, it's, it's like gasoline and oil and, and water. It just, I'm sorry. I'm being honest.
No, I appreciate that.
No, I, I understand. I think we're kind of saying the same thing. So we'll have a fleet manager and then that person, you know, much like other, others.
But I don't want to, if, if we could get somebody else you trust that's in there, another foreman or craftsman, because you have craftsmen and it all fits in, you want to give them a stipend, that's fine. But I can't, I can't see we're putting 60 grand. But I can't, I can't see we're putting 60 grand into a position like that or something. You know what I mean? It just, we got to learn to consolidate a little bit and touch on who's experienced, who's got skills.
Okay.
That's why you're sitting where you are, because you had the skills that somebody saw and said that was what it is.
Duly noted, Scott, and we'll get Paul.
So if I may.
Go ahead.
The intent is to hire a fleet manager and then also just have that other, have that person help out in other capacities if and when necessary.
So what I'm hearing you say then is your primary focus is not in hiring a facility guy, it's hiring a fleet guy?
That's correct.
With fleet experience? And that you would be adding on, perhaps to a stipend, additional duties should that person have capacity or availability to handle some facility functions?
If necessary.
If necessary. Is that, is that, so we're looking for a fleet experienced person?
So we have, we have foremen that can, in certain situations, do different, we have, for example, our forestry foreman also installs fencing. That's not necessarily forestry, but.
Yeah, but it goes along with, I understand that, that goes along, but we're talking, Joel Harden, there's a guy, you know him well.
Yep.
That's a facilities guy. I don't know if I'll be somebody like him, or even you and me could, together could be somebody, that guy knew a ton of stuff. He was like the MacGyver of facilities guys. And.
We're looking to hire someone like that for the fleet.
That's what I'm trying to say to you.
If that's, if that's.
I know what a fleet guy is, you know, you go to Minute Man Ford and there's the fleet guy telling me, you're buying the wrong filters. He goes, I know they're cheap, but, you know, spend $2 more and get these.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Wait.
I think we're all agreeing to a certain extent. Maybe, maybe we can have a further discussion, but, but I think, I think we're all basically agreeing on what this position is.
I think we're agreeing it's a fleet professional, and on the facility side, which is your strength, we have to figure that out. And just for the record, in terms of budget, there's not a lot of money in the budget this year for facility maintenance, repairs, upkeep. So that's why the priority is, is fleet.
That's why I'm kind of saying Paul might have to hang on to it for one, one short more year.
I hear your point, and I agree with your point.
That's the only thing. I didn't want to come out and burden you with it, but if you get the fleet guy, it might take a little strain off of you.
I got what you're saying.
But the other side, like you says, ain't a lot of money. We're not going to be ripping stuff down.
I understand, and I agree.
We'll, we'll follow up after we finish the budget, Paul, next week, and we'll get a note out to the whole board as to what our plan is on that.
Okay.
That's good feedback.
Thank you very much. Mr. McCrisky, any comment in regards to something that we said earlier?
Well, I talked about this as well, and I am qualified in fleet, Scott, as you know. You know, I did that, that company over in Taunton, and Paul is doing a good job at trying to create an asset management system within fleet, looking at the vehicles that we have, who they're assigned to, why that particular vehicle's assigned to that person, like to your point, are we maximizing the use of that?
Excuse me.
Are we buying the right vehicle for the job? I questioned, and we talked about a couple of different things, that bringing the mechanics into it, because you know what I know, and I can tell you the mechanics that we've got down there, we've never had before. You know, when they're pulling trunnion tubes out, you know, when they're rebuilding a 31-yard Packer, we weren't doing that before. We were sending all that out, astronomical money. That's all being done in-house. The job that I had in Taunton was similar in what Paul's looking for, because in the facilities, I did a little bit of that, only because it's like you do fleet asset management, the life of the truck, to your point, are we buying the right filters, things like that. It's sort of in the buildings a little bit, because I did, you know, a little bit with the shop as well. So I can understand where they're coming from, you know, and the primary thing would be the fleet, you know, so that we're, you know, we're not stuck with what we had a few years ago, not buying Packers, and now we're waiting, you know, to get them, they'll all come in at once, because you buy one, they tell you, oh, yeah, you'll have it next year, and then it becomes the year after, you know? So, I mean, right now, we're ordering a Packer that we won't see for three years. You know, so I understand, and I think, maybe, I don't think I misunderstood where it was, but the position wasn't like a 50-50. It was more the fleet and then just to, because you know what happens? You know, the one, somebody will say, well, that's not my job description, you know? So you say right up front, no, this is what your job description is. You're going to help out in the buildings when needed, but primarily fleet, you know, so that nobody comes in and says it's not in my job description. So I can understand where they're going. I was comfortable, and as long as I've been around like you, I've never heard the talk that was, was going on, talking with the mechanics. We talked about the 79 Sander, the 79 R model, and they, and now Bill Rose here will answer the question here now, is, so they, the Sander on that truck is fine, frame rails are fine on that, you know, they're not separating, they're in good shape, but the cab's a disaster. As you know how the R models, you know, would rot out, right? I don't have to tell you, right? So I said, well, why don't we just look for a used cab? Or even a used chassis? And they said, no, we can't buy anything used. Bill, there's nothing in our records, anything in laws that says we can't buy a used truck for the DPW, correct?
You can buy, you can, if town meeting agrees, they can buy any, you know, any type of truck, sure.
Well, that was, that was.
We bought a fire truck from Sharon, yeah.
That's right.
$500, wasn't it?
That's the point that I brought up. So, but you were on vacation when I made that phone call. So, you know, as you know, Scott, there's R model chassis out there, there's tractors that'll fit that Sander, and instead of going out and buying this big ticket item, the mechanics, I got to tell you, Scott, the mechanics were like deep into it. They were looking forward to this. You know, they're looking to the challenge to rebuild that truck, you know? So we're saving money right there, you know? And that's what a good fleet manager is going to do, and when you're working with good mechanics, as you know, you're going to accomplish some great things. So I mean, I'm excited to see that they're at least bringing these types of ideas forward now, that they never did before, you know? And I can understand, I didn't think the, the building thing myself, being here and knowing what I did over in Taunton, I was called on to do a lot of things, you know? I mean, the fence around the yard, you know, for all the trucks, you know? $110,000 project, that was my job, you know? So I think that's where they're going with it. It's not going to be that we're going to have, the fleet person's not going to run around changing doorknobs.
Right.
Or replacing windows. It's not that type of thing, you know? So, and I think, and that's what I even said to Paul, I says, it sounds sort of like that. When you say building, you wonder, what do we have, you know, a buildings manager? That's what he's supposed to be doing still, you know? But you can't do everything, you know? So I've gone on long enough. I just want to, you know, tell you that we really did a little deep dive into that thing, and I think the position, the way that they're planning it is pretty good.
Thanks. It's great feedback.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. Vice Chair Cavey, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just had a question, actually. I just wanted to confirm that we are not currently holding, there's no hold on development services, right?
There are no hold on development.
Okay, good. Because I know Mark Tisdale's on.
Oh, wait a minute, no, excuse me. Lou, you asked for development to be held? Did you ask for development services to be held?
Building, he said.
Building.
Building, okay, good.
And I asked that we take a building next. I'm, I'm sensitive to Mr. Tisdale not feeling well, but, yeah, but I'm asking after we get through with this discussion for this department, we take building next.
All right, so are there any other questions for Paul?
Mr. Gito.
Before I start, when I said at the beginning, in terms of, are we looking at this project, are we looking at it just as what it is? Or are we looking at it with the idea that perhaps?
Mr. Gito.
Or are we looking at it, are we looking at it just as it is? Or are we looking at it with the idea that perhaps there may be $800,000 more in it? I mean, the discussion we're having is basically just seeing how we can squeeze something out of something, rather than where do we need to be? I mean, if we need another person in the DPW to do a certain job, or we need to have money in there to do a certain function and have somebody else do the job, then that's one thing. If all we're doing is seeing, saying, how can we change the, the structure so that maybe we can do something a little bit differently than we're doing it? That's two different discussions.
So to, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Coulter.
Yes.
And if I interrupted you, pardon me, excuse me.
No, I would appreciate your interrupting me.
I, I think it's a little of all. We have the most constrained budget I've ever worked with in my career. The money, the available funds we have to work with are very limited. So to answer your question directly, we are absolutely trying to do more and more for less money than we've done it in the past. That's why you're seeing department heads consolidate, that's why you're seeing people, managers take on multiple tasks, as opposed to hiring a full-time manager, we're adding responsibilities to other managers' duties. It's not the right way to fly a plane long-term, but it's the right approach for right now, given the limited resources we have to work with. I mean, we've done it with Paul. A year ago this time, Paul was running facilities. Now he's running facilities and fleet management and, and trash and everything else. And we had discussions about even adding to that list a month ago. Mark is running multiple facilities. We don't have, we have to face into the reality that we've got a different issue, but very related, a serious health insurance challenge, and we're digging into the trust fund. So we've got to pay more of our operating monies to break even on the healthcare fund, and that's taking money out of the operating budgets. As you know, we've got issues that we're subsidizing some of the enterprise funds. We've got to manage our resources in the operating budget to do more with less so that we can continue to subsidize them until we fully fund them. So there are a number of operating challenges, and I couldn't be more proud of this organization for what they're doing in terms of working outside their, their comfort zone, their box, they're working harder than ever, they're working longer hours. We have a senior staff meeting on Thursday where there is six managers, all from the senior staff, all taking on additional responsibilities. I love when I speak with you because you've got a vision for what Stoughton can be and should be down the road. But for this fiscal year, for fiscal '24, we're dealing with the fiscal realities that we can, we only have to work with what we have to work with. I hope that answers your questions, and I don't think it's the answer that you want because of your, your vision for the future, which I really admire, I really respect it. But until we can solve some of these fiscal challenges we have, which we will, then we have to work with what we have.
Thank you for, for interrupting me and, and telling me what, what you did. You and I, I think, are trying to get to a different place. I think we can get there, begin to get there this year. Apparently, we're not in agreement on that particular issue. As I said last week, the schools got $4 million last year, last year from the state. In the middle of the year, they were able to use about $3 million for educational purposes, some of which was to restore, $300,000, $400,000 of which was to restore busing for athletics, and paying people back who had already paid for that busing, and then used another million dollars to do important repairs. They don't need to do those repairs this year, and they have the opportunity to decide whether or not they want to continue with the busing or do something else. So there's $4 million more in the educational side than, than they had at the beginning of last year. And we somehow or another have assumed that we are going to give $1.1 million more to the schools, a little bit less than before, instead of 3% or 3.5%, 2%. So they would get $5 million from what they started with last year, and we would get, what? Hardly anything. My view is that we should reassess that issue at this particular time and look perhaps to give, instead of 2%, give a half percent, give them $250,000, $280,000, $300,000, whatever the, whatever $1.1 million divided by four is, we could figure that out in an instant, something like $281,000. And we would get $800,000 that we could use this year to begin to address some of the issues that need to be addressed on the town side. And we know that there are a huge number of those. So we're not, we're not saying, oh, we don't like the schools. We're saying there's a town to be dealt with. And so I'm not buying into, I will buy in when we vote on this and I lose vote, but until that time, I'm not willing to buy in to saying, oh, we have a tight budget. We do have a tight budget, even with $800,000 more, if we got that in our budget. But when we sit around here and talk about the fact that we need to raise water and sewer rates, which we do need to do, when we have a whole lot of other things that need to be done, which aren't being done, I'm not willing to concede that. And that's why I asked the question. And that's why when I have sent things in to you, I've said, we need to do these kinds of things. Now, they don't come up to near $800,000. We just had a discussion about a truck or how we deal with trucks. We could go on and on and on for that. We need to, we need to do things to make the town look nice for the 300th anniversary. We need to do things to make the town nice to look for the people around us. We need to do things to help our recreation in the town. There are a lot of things that need to be done. And we can have two more meetings, one more meeting, two more meetings, and look at our budget as though we don't have a penny more to put into it, or we can take another approach and say, you know, there are areas that we need to do things for the entire town. And I'm for that, and so the things that I talk about are going to address those things. So I'll now get on to talking with, with, with Paul.
Can I respond to that matter? Yes, Mr. Coulter, please respond, and it is during a time check, it's 10:08.
I'm sorry for taking too much time.
There are many policy issues that have to be decided into the future, I think, beginning of fiscal '25. I think that we're so far into the budget cycle right now, to change it right now would be difficult. But just for the benefit of those who are listening, and I think you perhaps put it perspective why I say money's tight. In water and sewer, we have, I'd say, a $1.5 million operating deficit that has to be covered with a surplus taken from the operating budget. Healthcare coverage for employers, for schools and town employees, we're increasing that allocation for $1 million this year. And we're not as high as the broker is telling us we need to get to to keep the trust fund solid, because it hasn't been dealt with for a long time. So, we're, the boys have instructed me and our friends, people that guided me and saying, you know, that we have to deal with these things responsibly now.
What's on?
We have to take on these, thank you, Steve. We have to take these challenges on now. Fiscal '24 is a year of reorganization. Fiscal '25, we can begin to move the community forward. But right now, with those three major challenges alone, with the general government only hiring two people and maybe as many as four positions unfilled, so that's a net negative, new hires, FTEs. We're doing it because we've got employees who are willing to step up and respond to the challenge in a very, very professional way. If we can fix these functional structural deficits in water, sewage, and healthcare, then we're on our way to having a fiscal year '25 budget where your vision, that I truly respect, every time we sit, I'm inspired by listening to you. We can start to peel off those opportunities into the future. But right now, I came here with the process almost over, and thank goodness this budget committee did the work they did. We're just trying to deal responsibly with some very, very, very hard decisions. And our hope, and the chair and vice chair have discussed this at length, when we finish this budget at their direction, we're going to be conducting public hearings on this budget so that there's full transparency as to what the real fiscal challenges are that this community is facing, including the five-year capital plan that is going to knock people over with the amount of deferred maintenance we've been doing on buildings and equipment and so forth and so on. So, you hired me because I'm a turnaround guy. The first thing we can do in turnaround situations is to stop the bleeding. And once we do that, and we inform our community as to how we're responding to these immediate challenges, and they understand that with good data, we'll then start to roll out, we're going to call it the Gito Vision for the future, which I don't think anybody on this board could possibly disagree with. It's about making Stoughton great. But we just need this year to right the ship before we can start the Gito Plan. Thank you.
No, it's not going to be the Gito Plan, but I couldn't agree with, I couldn't disagree with you more. I really, I really could not.
I know that.
So, I will go ahead and be very brief. I think that when you go and mow the areas, the 59 plus or minus that you mow, that you figure a few of those that you want to put flowers and bushes and trees in and start to get this town looking good. And I also think that you've got to figure out how to do that, whether or not you're going to do it with your people or whether you want to have a landscaper or somebody else come in and do that with you. And I don't know what the answer is, but I think that there's money and time that needs to be spent on doing that. I mentioned to you another thing and sent a note to the town manager as well in terms of dealing with what I would call sort of walking areas or something like that along streets that are not downtown. But people like to walk, and people can't walk in a lot of areas because there are no sidewalks. But we don't need to have sidewalks. We could just have flat areas that we put some gravel down and get people off the road and get them out of the traffic. And that wouldn't cost an awful lot of money to do. And I had suggested one area where someone had asked me about that, if that could be done. And I don't know whether or not that's a good area. But there are areas that would warrant that kind of a look. And it wouldn't, it would be short money to begin to do that. And it would, it would provide some pleasant areas for people to move around the town, where they can't do that now. Another more mundane thing, and this is something that I absolutely do not know. I see in the water, in the water and sewer budget, some DPW assistant managers and so on in the enterprise fund, and I don't know how that is working in, but I can talk to you offline on that and learn a little bit more. I think I'm going to stop there.
Madam Chair?
Before, before you go on, I wanted to do a time check. It is now 10:15 PM. We have other presentations. We have Mr. Tisdale online for the building report. So, what is the wish of the board? Shall we proceed?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky.
I just thought it was fear to have all these people sit here all night and then possibly...
We just heard from the heavens.
Yeah, we deserve, Vice Chair Kayvee.
We heard what you said, Mr. McCrisky.
I know you did.
Yeah, I think Joe said what, sorry, I should say, Mr. McCrisky said more distinctly what I was also feeling. You know, Mr. Jafu has sat here, I didn't keep track, but what, 25 minutes without asking a question? You're here to answer questions about your budget, and we've talked about literally everything on the planet, other than your budget. And, you know, I find that kind of disrespectful, disrespectful of your time. I'll sit here all night, you know, I've got no place else to be, but I would like this to be on scope for the things that we're actually trying to accomplish. So, you know, I'm usually pretty patient about this, but my patience is more than pretty thin right now. And I think we've got to move on to the material in front of us and pay the people who work for this town the respect they're due. So, I'd like to keep on going with addressing the questions people have on the budgets. And thank you very much for taking, taking your time to come here tonight.
Thank you. And before you leave, Mr. Coulter?
I do want to just respond directly to Lou's, excuse me, Mr. Gito's issues for 2000, yeah, for 2000, thank you, for 2024. As I said in my introduction, those projects, Lou, are in this proposed budget. The ones that you just discussed, the three you just discussed, are in our recommendation to the board. That's why I said it in the introduction. Those were comments from previous meeting that we're incorporating into this final draft.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you. Okay. So...
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you so much for your patience. So, what that means, if we start going out of scope, then without disrespecting my fellow board members, I'll give a high sign to say, let's stay within scope and let's keep it moving.
The next department, Madam Chair, is building, every part of the city. Were there questions for the building department?
Mr. McCrisky and I have both, I think, indicated an interest in this area. He, from the point of view of dealing with zoning issues, and me, from the point of view of dealing with, with the issues of inspections and some of the zoning issues that, that he may not have mentioned. We have people living in buildings that probably are unsafe. And there are more dwelling units, people dwelling in single rooms in buildings that may not have adequate exits. We have all of the issues that Mr. McCrisky mentioned, the parking issues, the overdevelopment or, I don't know, he can mention that better than I can. You can't wish those things away. You've got to put a body on that, whether you buy that body from other communities with an intermunicipal agreement or whether you put somebody else on staff. If you're going to solve the problem, you've got to put the money into it. And I won't say anymore about it.
Lou, let me respond.
I just want to make sure that it happens.
The zoning enforcement officer is in this budget. They're advertising as we sit here for it.
I thought that we were not going to advertise. We have one person who had left.
That's the position.
Yeah.
And they're filling that.
But you were filling it now, but even with that person in there, we weren't getting all of the stuff that we are talking about.
I can't speak to then, but I can tell you, we will hire a highly competent, experienced zoning enforcement officer.
I'm not, I'm not believing that anybody was incompetent. I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that we have the, the staff there to give us what we need. And if, if Ms. McCrisky is happy with that, then I guess I'm going to have to be happy with that. But I'm not sure that I'm going to be satisfied at the end of the day.
So, Mr. Gito, what are you asking for?
I'm asking for another person, or I'm asking for money to go into that budget to make sure that we accomplish what it is that we say we want. We've been talking for a year about trash being in the streets, things not being picked up, other things, parking issues and other things like that. And I haven't seen anything happen with it, except that we've spent a lot of time talking about it.
Okay. So, I'll defer to, yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Yeah, I just want to...
Or we defer to Mr. Tisdale.
Well, I will, but I just want to, I just want to put what my comment was, and Mr. Gito's correct, is that I believe we need another position that would be, in addition to what we have now, we're going to hire the new zone, another zoning person. I believe we need an assistant building inspector and assistant to zoning enforcement, another full-time position that would help those positions, because the zoning enforcement person that went on to another community couldn't do everything by himself. He was going after the people, he was sending letters, he was going, you know, for court, and then he's going and getting phone calls from neighbors and so forth. There wasn't enough there. Inspections, I've talked with the building inspector myself, and he is doing everything. And now he's even challenged because his department's changing a little bit as well. And he's just, the inspections, you know, people are making complaints. Mr. Gito made the statement. We have people that, if you remember, we had a fire and a bomb. The chief is here, was that last year, over by Faxton Park, where we had the dwelling, and there was people living in the barn, ran extension cords up into the barn, and that's how they were living. We had a horrible event on Park Street a couple of weeks back, and there was a person living in a, a building out and back, you know? So, they're there, these problems are there. One person is not going to solve it. And we can talk, and Tom, believe me, I understand where we're at with the budget, but whatever we, we've got to, we've got to work smarter in that area. We're not, we're not putting a dent in it. And I'm just concerned, and I don't lose an agreement, well, I'm just concerned with the direction the town's going. And I think we have to be bold, and I think we have to put positions in that we need and fight for them at town meeting and be ready to say, listen, here, all the budgets are the budgets, but, you know, I'm spot on, and, you know, and I'll say, you know, Lou and I agree once in a while. But when we do agree, there's something that is so bold right now, is that we have a job we have to do for the residents on this end of Pearl Street. And we should be willing to put the money in the budget and go to town meeting, go through the finance committee and say, this is why we need it, and take it right to town meeting. And I don't want to get into that, what we used to do, this end and this end and that end and these people and those people. It doesn't make government work, but we have to fight for what we need in this budget to serve the residents on this end.
Yeah, I understand that. But let's talk, we're talking budget, so let's throw some dollars out there so we know what we're really talking about. So, for these two posi, I just wanted to ask really quick, for these two positions or just one, what is the, the base salary or the mid-salary?
$72,000.
We're talking $72,000.
What we're budgeted. Here's the issue I've got. I'd be open to any feedback from the board. If we want to hire five zoning officers, just tell me what five jobs you want me to cut, because it's that simple. If any of you have seen Apollo 13, if I may, Lou, Apollo 13, the movie, when they were trying to figure out the re-entry plan and they didn't have enough oxygen, Gene Kranz said, you're telling me what you need, I'm telling you what we have. That's where we are with the budget. I, I just, unless you want to propose an override, which I don't think is going to be very popular, we get 35% of our budget for government services. It's just not enough to do what we want to do until we stabilize those three big holes in the budget that are causing our deficits, water and sewage, healthcare, and, water storage, and, water, water storage and healthcare. Those are the three deficits. We close those, then we can have a discussion of, of all kinds of things to make our town great. But we got to fix it, secure it, before we can grow it. And so, I think if we want to have a meaningful discussion, it's got to be about priorities. We have X amount of dollars to work for, X amount of dollars. I have no objection going all the way through this budget, line item by line item, and keep cutting, 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 cutting to what you think is not a priority so that we can invest in what you think is a priority. The other, the other policymakers, I support that fully.
My policy would be that we want more of the budget. That's my policy, which is something that we're not talking about. And that's what I'm saying. We can put these items out that need to be done and not have a pushback that says, oh, no, we can't do that because we have to do this first. I'm not saying that it's either/or. I'm saying that it's both. And if we're not in agreement as a board that it's both, then it's not both. But if we are in agreement as a board that it is both, then it is both. And so, I'm not willing to concede that it's not both yet. When we vote next week or the week after, if we can't vote next week on the issue that I raised at the beginning of the meeting, and, and basically stop the, oh, I'm not sure, if we can't do that, then we're going to just flop around. I'm not interested in taking something from another department, and I don't think that Joe is either, but I'm not going to speak for him. And I don't think that Joe is either, but I'm not going to speak for him. I'm saying that there are things that need to be done. And I'm not willing to concede that until there is a four-to-one, three-to-two vote, whatever the number is, against me.
So, we, what's coming, coming down the pike? We have a presentation from our fire chief and deputy fire chief. They want to present to us logically a rationale why they need another FTE. Then we have the police department. They want to justify to us why they need another deputy police chief.
But that will be next week.
And that's next week, but that's coming down the pike. So, I would like it if we could, and maybe everyone on the board doesn't know that's coming up, but I would like to hear the full story, but of what the requests are and why, and the whys to it. Our town manager, Mr. Coulter, has said on numerous occasions, we're just trying to really get our arms around this year so we can plan for what the tsunami, can I use the word tsunami, this coming?
Yes.
Or maybe that's too, too strong of a word.
Challenges.
The challenges. And we don't, we always go forward with challenges. We address challenges. But how many times does Mr. Coulter have to say that this is where we are right now, but we haven't heard what everyone else has to say?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
What expenses are in our budget that do not benefit the municipal side of government? Okay? We have positions that are funded in our budget that we don't employ the people. We make expenses that don't benefit the municipal side of government. We provide services from the municipal budget to another entity that's our expense out of our budget. And that's where, and I don't want to even go near saying I'm going to speak for Lou, but I'm spot on with Lou, with what he's saying about, we have needs in this town. We have never been proactive. We've had to beg, borrow, we have to show, you know, you know, the need right down to how many calls that we're answering. Right? We know our call volumes are going up. You know, we know that right now, I won't pick out a number or put the chief on the spot, but we still use out-of-town ambulances to supplement our town on a regular basis. That's not fair to those communities that are struggling with their budgets, because we're not doing our homework here to make sure that we have the services to provide to the people of this town. We've got to start to stand up and go to town meeting and fight for what we need as well. I'm not looking to pick a fight with anyone, but this has been, this goes back years and years and years, that we've always been on, you know, picking up breadcrumbs. You know, and we pay, I've got to say, hundreds of thousands of dollars in services that should be somewhere else. We've got to start to look at that as well. Mr. Coulter, I'm spot on with you, I'm going to support you in what you want to do, but I think, you know, Lou, Lou, I said to him, it blew my mind last week when he, when he said what he said. You know, because that's the third rail around here. When you do that, you get phone calls. But you know, it's got, we've got to answer those calls and saying, listen, we have a responsibility to the taxpayers as well. And the residents are the residents. They're being served by many areas. And we owe it to the residents to provide the best services we can to move the town forward and do it at an economic way. You know, we're not going over, I don't think we're asking for much, but we need a few positions. We got to get a few more positions here. And that's it, I'm going to shut up because the chief.
Mr. McCrisky, yeah, you're preaching to the choir.
I know, but I'm, but I'm telling you, Madam Chair, we've got to do it, though.
The town, the town is growing. Am I right by saying crime is increasing in the town of Stoughton?
Right.
So, but.
Madam Chair, if you think about it. For a moment, crime is growing exponentially. We're getting six calls a week of stolen cars coming from one side of town going to the other side of town. Calls for EMS is going up by double digits every year. The need for, the need for zoning enforcement to just make sure there are not mattresses on our highways is, is increasing every single day, the days that are coming in. I'm getting three calls a day from citizens angry about the potholes in their roads because we've got a big, big article with $2.9 million to do roads over this year. Will it get through town meeting? I, I don't know. But we're, we're deferring so many things. Lou's 100% right, but we're deferring so many things because we have to work with, within the context of what we have right now. But it's time that the general services of the town be funded.
Vice Chair Cavey.
Yeah, does anybody have a question for Mark Tisdale? Yeah, Mark wants to go to bed.
Any questions for Mr. Tisdale? That would be none. Silence means.
He's probably already gone.
Yeah. Oh, there he is. Hey.
And Mark, I must say, I really liked that Mac Jones haircut.
Feel better.
Feel better, feel better, Mr. Till, good night.
Do we have another department that we're going to be asking questions?
Yes, please, just one. Would that be?
Fire.
Fire.
Chief. With our apologies, sir. Well, thank you. By way of introduction, while the chief is getting settled in, he made a compelling argument for three firemen. And I asked him if he could pull it off with two, and he, he said he would give it his best effort, as every department is saying, we'll give it the best we've got. And then when we did the final round of budget cuts and realized how much money we have to put into the healthcare trust fund, a million dollars a year, I cut it with the, with an understanding, or with the message to the chief that, give it all. You know, if, if this board says, put them back in, we'll make it work. He makes a compelling argument, but I just thought it should be a decision by the board.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Coulter.
Good evening. We're just taking a minute, Assistant Chief Maycom is just going to pull it up. So, I want to thank Mr. Coulter, Tom, for giving me the, at least leaving the door open. I, I believe that, actually, as I sat there just now, I believe that a lot of you made my argument for me, and probably I didn't have to share my presentation.
It's great, chief, thank you, move to adjourn.
We, myself and Assistant Chief Maycom, and the fire department itself understands the situation. We understand the financial health of the town. And I almost feel a little bit like I'm here, I'm here to present at least somewhat of an answer. We originally requested three firefighters. And in talking to Mr. Coulter, he asked, how can I, can I do it with two? And I said, I'll do what needs to be done. And, and then when he had to pull all the members off, or the potential positions off, all I asked was for this opportunity. So, I did a whole presentation, I'll stop at the three positions. Three positions are because, you, you controlling it? Okay, great. Are because we have four groups. We have one group at 15. We have three groups at 14. For context, back in 1999, we had, we had all groups at 13, over 20-something years ago. And a little bit of research, I even saw when they pulled, and whatever reason, they had to pull two firefighters from the request of Chief Larissy on town meeting floor. We went, we went without, and there's a couple of different reasons as to why we've gotten to kind of the offset here. Our call volume has increased substantially. We've, we're approximately, well, not approximately, we're about 1,200 calls over the year 2020 on emergency responses. Those are emergency responses alone. So, our call volume's gone up 23% in the past two years. We are, we're, we're holding it together, and I've heard a lot of the conversation, but I would, I would suggest this. We have to level service the residents. We're not even doing that right now. Mr. McCrisky's right. I think we've had, I won't jump the slide, but over 400 mutual aid response, ambulances into town over the past three years. You know, it's, it's actually, we've had over, well, I, I will give you the exact number, but over 400 call, mutual aid ambulances responding to the town for calls of service over the, since 2020, January 2020.
We have the year-by-year breakdown.
Yep, and we have that breakdown. But our goal, we really do want to, we want to meet the service required or being requested by the residents in the community. We are, everybody's busier. The call volume, I, I've never seen it jump historically. I had to go to my Stoughton Fire historian, Donal Chipman, to give me the numbers. Sometimes you get to be careful what you ask for, because you gave it back to 1903. But, you know, the, the numbers have never jumped so high. Why? I'm not exactly sure, but our medicals are through the roof. Our calls for service are through the roof. I say this because there is an answer, or what I feel is potentially the answer. So, NAPA also increased, and we can go by standards, and I understand, but this is important to me, is that NAPA itself, on initial responses, has increased the initial number of firefighters responding on the initial response to be 17 on what they call low-risk or a single-family dwellings. They're talking strictly to structural fires. 17 minimum initial response. We're at 15, 14, 14, and 14. So, that just goes to show you, you know, and we're not even asking to get up to the standard. The importance here is because it comes down to the safety of the firefighters and also the citizens. The job has gotten more hazardous. The fire is growing four times every minute in size, which creates much more issues for us. So, the more, the quicker we can get, deploy the hose, deploy the water, open the roof, ventilation, everything that's required to safely and properly not only preserve property, but save lives. And it's safer for our firefighters. So, one thing we talked about is the ambulance, out-of-town ambulances, other-town ambulances called to Stoughton. The number is 437 since January of 2020. That number's important, that date's important because that's when, actually, the select board, the CBA went to 11 per shift minimum, which, which allowed us to staff two ambulances. The reason why I want to get to the 15 across the board is it will allow me to staff that third ambulance for those extra calls. What I did here is just real quick, down and dirty math, is I asked for our deputy of EMS to give me the average ambulance bill sent out. And that average ambulance, of all the numbers, was our, what we consider our ALS, which is basically a billing category, and we just used three miles. That's $2,553.89 billed to the insurance companies. What that shows is projected revenue lost over those three years is $1.1 million in lost revenue that goes into your general account that assists with paying for a lot of these things that, you know, we, you know, we actually have been priding ourselves on the increased revenue of the ambulance as of late. Through the select board, we're allowed to raise the rates to the insurance companies. That's had a direct impact. The, the ability for us to bill that, change our billing company, capture that money right when they're done doing their PCRs, their patient care reports at the hospital, it goes right to the billing company, and they're billing right away. And why that's important is because on a lot of medicals, but basically MVAs, motor vehicle accidents, there's a $10,000 cap. It's basically first come, first served. And what would happen was, on the previous company, we'd have to take all our patient care reports at the end of the week, scan them in, initially fax them over, but then scan them in and send them over at the end of the week. Believe me, the hospitals were way ahead of us in capturing money. I think we've seen the, the revenue increase, and we will get to that. But this is the emergency response 2020 through 2022. We just finished the year at a thou, you know, almost 1,200 calls over 2020. 6,478 calls for emergency service. That's not including our inspections, our calls for just, you know, our nuisance calls, I'd call them, but these are true emergency calls. So, we're seeing a, a call for service request, and we're looking for the staff to, to kind of match that at this point. It also saves on, you know, injuries, injured on duty, or what we consider our 111Fs. We work as, as teams, so the more there to assist in, in patient care and/or, you know, like I said, deployment of hose, you know, trying to do it with one or, or two less, it really makes an impact.
If you could go to the next slide. Go ahead.
If I could, real quick, I just.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Gito.
What are the, what are the numbers in West Henshaw?
2020, that's 525,259 emergency response calls.
Oh, okay.
Next year, 2021.
Thank you. I see that now.
Is over 600 calls more for a 12% increase, and an additional 1,200 calls more than 2020 for the year 2022 at 22-plus percent increase.
Could I ask one question on a point before? You said that the billing was $2,635, or some number similar to that?
Yeah.
How much money do you actually get?
So, call. How much do we actually capture percentage-wise?
Of that $2,635?
Well, that's where it's a little bit tricky.
Just the number?
Yes, I, I understand that. I just needed a minute to explain that, because with Medicare, they give a flat rate.
I know.
Which they have just increased to 8.1%, they've increased 8.1% in November. But the other thing we've done, and we worked very hard on it, and especially credit to our program administrator, but also our deputy VMS, is we've signed on with a program where it does take a lot of work, but we go through each Medicare, and we are able to try to capture lost revenue. This year, last year, I think it was $275,000 that we got at the end of the year. This year, we've been earmarked for $317,000 added on due to Medicare's flat fee. Medicare understands they give a flat fee. So, we're able to try, we're able to capture that. And like I said, this year, $317,000 has been earmarked for Stoughton to receive. It typically comes in towards the end of the fiscal year.
In June.
In June, which was a nice number for us to see. So, that's why we've, we feel very comfortable in projecting our ambulance revenue higher than what we had anticipated.
No, you didn't answer the question yet, so I'm going to come back.
Oh, so, so the percentage, the percentage of what we're capturing?
No, no, no. You, you said that you would have captured.
Yeah. Yeah.
At $2,635 a call, you would have captured $1,119,000.
I said that.
And now I think you said that you got $317,000.
I apologize, I, I went off track. It is very difficult to, so I, I believe our capture rate is about 60% of actual billing.
Private first Medicare.
So if we bill 250, $2,555 for a bill, but Medicare gives us flat fee, that's why I say the actual capturing of the total number, we have it about, I think it's close to 60% of billed versus actually captured revenue. It's always kind of moving on us because of the fact that if we bill $2,555 for, to Medicare, they're giving us a flat fee. I'm not exactly sure what that number is right now. They did just increase it in November, so.
Maybe when, when I talk to you later this week, you can give me that number.
Well, I, I would love to.
And we do have aggregate numbers for the last three years for what we've received as a community.
Well, no, absolutely, but what we build out for, that's where, I'm just saying, sometimes it gets tricky, that's all. Sure. So, in, in lieu of time, these are just the increases of our mutual aid ambulance calls over the last three years. Initially, it did have impact, the 11-man minimum with the two ambulances. We only required 91 out-of-town ambulances to come in. 2021, we saw an increase of, you know, 70%, 153. And now this year, 193. It's not slowing down out there. There is, there's a whole conversation having to do with the fire service and our surrounding towns and some of the issues that they have. Some of them are not career. They're not getting the call, call firefighters in anymore. So that's requiring, that's requiring us to let, rely less and less on mutual aid. And, and they're busy as well. So, let me go to the next one. This is, this is where we are, this is what we anticipate. So fiscal year 2020, we brought in 1.6 million actual dollars into the general account. 2021, 1.9. We went to, in October of that fiscal year, we went to the new billing company, and also not too long after that, we went to the, we went, increased our billing rates, and we're at, and where we see the projection going is to about 2.8, and that would include the $317,000. So I, I don't see it falling. There is, you see the numbers in our emergency calls, you see the actual revenue coming in. If there, we did kind of a side-by-side comparison on that chart. November of the previous year, we were at $658,000. This year, total revenue is $993,603. We actually, I actually put a hyperlink on this as well. This is a real-time, I don't know why, kick over. If you'll just give him a minute to sign in. We track our revenue very carefully. We track all revenue, whether it's permits, and this doesn't include permits on this. This is strictly what those three positions will do for us. At the end of the day, it's also about being safer and, and actually trying to get closer to that standard of responses per piece, not per piece, but the initial response to, to an incident, low hazard if it might be. Yeah, try that again. Just go down to the PowerPoint presentation and hit the link now. Nope. Next one over to the right. There you go. So the, the numbers are real. On the chart, it shows it. In, in lieu of time, I'm going to, you know, this is, this is what we would say would be an answer. This is, these are three positions I feel can bring revenue to the town. I really do. One number I cannot capture is how many times do out-of-town, other towns call us for an ambulance, and we're just not available. That's one number I, I can't get a hold of. No one tracks it. I've tried it in a couple of different places. What they do is they just say, no, Stoughton doesn't have an ambulance available, and they, and then that other town moves on to the next community to see if they have an ambulance. Okay, great. So what we did was we do a side-by-side comparison, November 2000, fiscal year 22 compared to fiscal year 23, and you can see the real numbers. That's captured money. We get reports from the ambulance billing company. They may or may not have been entered into Munis just yet, but those are the numbers that are coming through on our reports. And that 50% point, that 50.83% increase is real. That's money in your general account, or, and it should be entered into Munis, and if not, it will be soon. Do you want to go? Yeah, so these are, these are including our permits and, and everything. So we did a fiscal year 21, 1.9. Fiscal year 22, 2.2. And November, as of, yeah, just shy of $1 million in November, July to this, November. So our reports typically come in the middle of the month. So in January 14th, 15th, we'll get December's numbers. And I can tell you, so increased call volume, which means increased ambulances, which means increased revenue. I hope that you'll at, at least consider this. I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Coulter, I, I really do. There's some historical things to it, if, even if you look back at the summary of FY29, I mean, sorry, I apologize. I'm not that, I'm not that old. It's just late. You got me.
1829.
18, yeah. 1819. Fiscal year 19 is town meeting, it's in the, it's in the summary. Two positions were taken away, but even at the bottom of that, the future, it says, add six positions to the fire department. This is a, and we're just playing a little bit behind the eight ball here, as every department is, and I understand it, I really do. I, I feel like I have a good pulse of this town. The call volume is up because the demographics have changed, and people require more. I'm sure our population, the census show the increase in our elderly population has gone up. I think, you know, there's a, there's a call, we, we have actually changed, you know, it's funny, I'm traditional. If you saw some of those first pictures, it's, it's old fires or old historical pictures. I love the culture of the fire service, but we're all hazards. We're no longer just a fire department. We're all hazards. We respond to everything and anything. Sometimes we laugh when, you know, when you don't know what to do, they call us, and, you know, we, we're there. We pride ourselves in that, but we, we're getting stretched out a little bit. But more importantly, I believe to you and to the points we were just dealing with, I feel like we have an answer, if nothing else, an opportunity to capture money that other towns are getting from Stoughton. That being said, there's another thing going on in the area. There are two towns that, you know, above us or somewhat above us on the other side that use private ambulances who aren't keeping up their contracts. So they're requiring more ambulances because the private ambulances are not able, or, or not keeping up with their contracts. I've reached out to those chiefs, the chiefs have reached out to me, sometimes they were, hey, I'm sorry, we had to call you. I'm like, I'm fine with that. We're here, when we need you, you're there. So they're, they're in a position where they're not leaving private ambulance anytime soon, and so that's another capture of, of ambulance calls or ambulance transports that we'd potentially be able to capture. Do you have anything you want to?
If you'd like us to go through in hyper-speed fashion, we could go through the rest of the presentation, but primarily, the three additional positions is where the department is in crucial need to meet the demands of emergency response. Mr. Coulter?
Mr. Coulter?
I think the board would be made a compelling case.
Yes, they have.
So with respect, if it's the board's desire, I get a few questions, and I think we've clarified this, but if the board feels they made a compelling case, I would suggest that this hour will not have to be one for them to make, and even more compelling. It's a matter of, yes. So may I ask a couple of questions? Because they shut some lines. Isn't it true, Chief, this is the question I have, isn't it true, when my family comes to this world, I'm hearing about it all the time, that there are a lot of new tree root fires, that they may have a stomachache, and they have, they arrive to the emergency room, and it's competitive for the issues?
Yes, so that's been going on quite a bit in, in our town, but yes, to your point, yes, absolutely. And, and so, I'll just answer that real quick with an example. We do a great program in Stoughton, I'm not sure whether any of yous know about it, we bring in students from all over the world through one of our captains who runs an EMS school. And that's throughout the country and throughout, actually, the world. We've had students from New Zealand, paramedic students from New Zealand riding with us, other parts of their country. I cannot believe somebody called an ambulance for that.
Right.
Yes.
I have two other questions I have to bring some clarity.
Perhaps I should turn that on. Isn't it also true that when we increased the three in the original budget, your overtime line item went way down?
Absolutely, and the assistant chief, I believe, was just going to go to that point. Our, our overtime is a direct result, you know.
Third question I have, Chief, is, right now, we have a policy in this town that, and it's in my hometown as well, that if a Stoughton resident is transported, there's no insurance, we don't seek to collect. We write that off. Now, I think they're connected in some ways.
So, so what we do is they would, they would, yeah, so if they don't have insurance, they would definitely, what they do is they fill out a hardship form. And typically with Stoughton residents, there's two things. One is we waive all co-pays for Stoughton residents. The other thing we do is we'll look at those hardships, and typically, some have come across my desk. I usually will call either, you know, I have actually have with my staff, we kind of review them, but if there's a hardship, yeah, typically we.
Understood.
Yeah.
But the last question I have, maybe the last two, is, are we creating a disincentive for people who are uninsured to take an ambulance to go to the hospital for a sprained finger, a broken finger, a stomachache, a cough? And, and if that's the case, if the answer to that's yes, should we at least consider some, should the board consider a policy where there's a minimum charge, even if, even if it's a Stoughton resident, just so there's some accountability for calling for that call that they could have driven to the hospital? Maybe it's $100, but something that deters people from calling an ambulance at 2:00 in the morning because they have a headache.
So the typical, the typical patients that we transport, who can either show hardship or don't, don't have the ability to pay, are not, I'm going to word this carefully, are not typically the ones that would, I consider, abuse the 911 calls. You know, typically, the hardships we see are people who are elderly or, you know, there's, and I'll tell you, there's a lot of elderly that try to come in, and they'll, I'll pay so much per, but you can see it in the, in the forms they're filled out, they don't even have that. So we don't, we don't typically make them go through that. What I see more of is an expectation of transport to the Mass General. Nope, that's where I'm going. That's where I'm going. And, and it's not typically your Stoughton residents, per se.
Well, that's actually my last question. When you do an out-of, out-of-town pickup, are you billing, two-part question, are you billing the department that called you, or are you billing the person? And if it's an out-of-town person that's a hardship, do we get paid anything for that?
So I haven't received an out-of-town hardship. No, we do not pay the department. We bill the, we bill the insurance com, bill the insurance company, and they vise for us. So they would, when they come in of those calls, they just bill the insurance company. That's, it's a mutual agreement between communities. We've been doing this, whether it's fire, EMS.
Sure.
Anything. We're pretty comfortable with that. So I think that, you know, I think that billing the other department, they'll just say, we'll call.
I'm not suggesting you.
Oh, okay.
I was just trying to understand. We have the same problem with human services. We're providing VNA services to people to support other towns, and then they don't have any insurance, but yet we're paying the VNA nurses.
And just for, just for historical context, Tom, we, we started this special study on mutual aid ambulances responding to the town. Prior to the board and putting the department up to 11 minimum, we had over 700 and somewhat calls per year coming in from other towns. So the numbers have, it's actually done wonders, and, and we're not calling, and you could see these other towns, I mean, when we were just running one ambulance and Stoughton is just way too busy for one ambulance, they were getting tired of it, you know? So we work on a very good mutual aid agreement with all the surrounding communities. I think that, I think what's changed is, is probably generations of people. We're seeing younger people transporting and expectations of, you know, transports. Now, by law, we can't deny people medical treatment, and so that's, that's where we're at. You know, somebody calls for, calls for service, we're there, and, and ultimately, that's what we do do. We provide service, and, and we, and we enjoy that. The, the best part about it, I believe for, for you or for the town, is that we're able to bill for that. And, and we do so. And, and I think the numbers have shown that we're doing a good job with that. We're just asking for the opportunity to do it a little bit more and not, it, it just benefits the department too, because the workload is not as intense on, on the group that's there now. So I can stop. There is a direct result with the overtime, though. If we can't get this, we're going to have to fill it with overtime. And because what's happened in, I don't know whether I've told you this, but when we first came on, after about three months, we had 12 people out injured on legitimate bicep tears, I mean, some serious injuries, and that number's down. We only have two.
Four.
Four out, but two are heading toward retiring. So we've, we've done a good job there, but.
Unfortunately.
It's, it's carrying, it's carrying people down from the third floor of a triple-decker on Park Street, and, you know, the, the stairs are old and they're twisted, and they're not carrying somebody downstairs who's unconscious is not an easy task. So, you know, more hands make light work, and that's, that's kind of how this all falls in, but we're able to kind of turn that around, and, you know, we're not, I hope this is real wood. We want to remain healthy.
It's veneer. I can say I'm convinced that you need the extra positions, but my question in regard to my, my statement, when will we have better projected revenue numbers? You said January and February. So what is your best guess?
Bill and I were just discussing that. We expect to get House One.
So for example, if we have state aid at $20.9 million.
Right.
What do you, we think that number's going to go up.
We do.
But what's your best guess?
As to when?
On how much? The when and the how much?
If I had a guess, having been there for 12 years, House One will come out in mid-January, and that is, that's not even a step in the process, that's simply the new governor's guesstimate of, of Chapter 70, Chapter 90, and unrestricted local aid, mid-January. What happens, because the budget process between the House and Senate doesn't begin until April, the Speaker and the Senate President typically get together the end of February and, and pass a resolution on a consensus budget for local aid. So, middle of January for how? So middle of January for House One, which is a, that's not a number we can run with, that's her guidance on the budget. The real number we can take to the bank will be the consensus budget by the House and Senate, which is mid-February, and then we'll wait for new growth at the end of the year, which is probably June?
August.
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 August. So we just go with last year's new growth?
We've been taking a five-year average.
Five-year average.
We play the estimate game.
We could play the estimate game.
My guess, Madam Chair, is where the formula was just changed for Chapter 70, my guess is if we could get a 5% increase in that, which is a substantial amount of money, I think that'd be a reasonable bet. I know it won't go down. They can't increase it one year, then change the formula, then decrease it. So I bet we get, I'm betting on a 5%. Now, our revenue projections in the original draft were very, very optimistic, 95, 90, 95, 98...
On local receipts.
On local receipts. We've now reduced that down between 85 and 90 on many of the local receipts. They were just so optimistic that we were going to get caught, we were going to get caught stuck.
So usually, we go in with a conservative estimate number, so what I hear you saying now is that the local receipts that we estimated at the time, at the beginning of our operational budget discussions, was $11.3 million, and we believe that's going to go down?
I'll tell you right now, note, what you're seeing in this budget is a reflection of us pulling them down.
Okay.
This is the conservative revenue estimate.
So the total estimated revenue is $123.9 million?
All in.
And that's all in. Does that also include the revised estimate on the indirect cost?
Bill, I'll leave that to you.
Because I'm trying to see if we can hold on and believe that there would be revenue to cover their ass, the police ass, and the DBW ass, all at the same time? Because we, $70,000?
That's already in there.
Already in there.
That's in there, yep.
The problem, Madam Chair, is, as you know, is that the budget is due to the Finance Committee third Tuesday in January. House One won't come out till after that. So by that time, the budget is essentially, I don't want to say it's out of your control, but, you know, any changes would have to be run by the FinCon, because you're turning over the budget third Tuesday in January, unless you wanted to consider requesting an extension till House One came out. I don't know if they'd grant it, probably not, but...
Vice Chair Cavie, I was going down another path, but I would like to hear what Vice Chair Cavie has to say.
Yeah, so I mean, this is, this is sort of a constant frustration, it's, but it's just the environment we work in and have to deal with in the past.
Could you speak louder, please?
Sure. In the past, when we've arrived at a town meeting, or actually just even at January 17th, or January 15th, so mid-January, we turned the budget over to, to the Finance Committee. On occasion, we've had deficits at that point. Recently, and a couple, a couple of years ago, one of the approaches that we took to address this was to build a list of items that we would be willing to scrap if this money didn't become available. You know, and everyone's fingers crossed until the very end, but it turns out, we all, you know, all the money came in, so that was available. Can't do that here, I wouldn't recommend that we do, if you create a deficit just because we can. But on the one hand, on the other hand, we could also come to the Finance Committee with a list of things that we would like to add if, if the money became available, and prioritize that. It could just be, this could be the only item, could be others, and if it's, the money's not available, it's not available, but if it becomes available, we can additionally... I really have to ask this question, because I've never, we've never had a special town meeting happen so, right after a town meeting. But I know that some of this information doesn't really even come down, it comes down to like the final vote, which, you know, can, can happen well after our, our town meeting has ended. Could we pull, have a town meeting only a couple of months later to address this if the money became available?
Yeah, and we've done that the last couple of years, we've had, at the fall town meetings, we've adjusted the budgets.
Yeah.
So...
So like a supplemental budget.
By that time, you have the new growth, you have the local aid, final local aid, you have your final local receipts for the fiscal year, so...
We have more certainty with union contracts that we're negotiating. I love the idea, Steve, Mr. Cavie, when, when, in the legislature, you pass the House and the Senate budget on to the governor, it's with those types of notes, because they have the same problem. Revenue can be adjusted, and so if we send it with a letter that I'm happy to work with Bill to draft, that says we've made deleterious cuts in our budget that are not sustainable, or didn't fund things that are needed, and should, should local receipts and state aid, Chapter 70, increase further, it's contingent upon adding these things back in. I'd be happy to work with Bill to draft that.
I think that's a great idea. It's a great opportunity that we shouldn't pass up on.
A great example of that, Madam Chair, is the, is the healthcare. I mean, what our broker is recommending we fund, and what we're, what we can afford to fund, because we have to take 65% of it into our budget, and the employees have the balance of that. We'd put in another $300,000 if we could find it, just to get to break even. We can't right now. So we would say that in that memo, whether it's OPEB, or municipal insurance, or anything like that. If, Chief, if we, through you, Madam Chair?
Yes, I must have called.
It's late, I'm taking very, being very careless here. Chief, if we, and I'm not suggesting this is what the board will do, this is their decision, not mine, but if we made a commitment to fund two, and then have a third one subject to an understanding of the cherry sheet, would that help you? I know that gives you 15 on three shifts, correct?
Yeah, so like I said, you know, we're, we feel like we would do whatever it takes to be part of that, and to help with the situation. I think that, you know, yeah, no, absolutely, I can't see her.
And we'll put it in that, through you, Madam Chair, we'll put it in that memo to the Finance Committee that says if state aid, if the consensus budget from the House and the Senate comes out, it increases, the first place we're going to go to fund is a third fireman, and the second place we'd go to fund in order of priority is an additional payment towards the healthcare. I think that's the type of collaboration I would hope they would understand and appreciate. I know they would.
Oh, absolutely.
That's wonderful. Like it?
What's next?
Oh, what's next? That's it? Oh, Vice Chair Cavie, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I just, I do want to add, I mean, I don't want to, I feel like I kind of like maybe missed a component here, but, but any reference to like Chapter 70, that goes straight to the schools, it's not, not something that we would factor into any of this.
You're talking to the other side of the room again.
Yeah, so I know you just mentioned Chapter 70, but that, that wouldn't affect any of these decisions, it wouldn't, it goes straight to the...
Well, if there's an increase in Chapter 70, I guess that's the question. The town meeting article for this fiscal year, it talks about a lump sum of money. If it goes into, we don't have, yeah, for 2024, I believe it's a lump sum of money, $1.1 million or something like that. If Chapter 70 comes in higher than we expect, is there any understanding on the use of that surplus?
Well, my understanding is that the state gives that to us to really pass through to the schools, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't really consider that something that we would be able to, to touch, even though it ends up in a, in the general fund.
Well, actually, the state only expects us to give to the schools minimum net school spending. We're close to 30% over net minimum spending. So you may decide to do that, but the state's not requiring us to do that.
Yeah, fair enough. Yeah, I would, I would personally rather not, not entertain that until, until we had some other, I feel confident there are 1,001 other sources that we can, we can address ahead of that, so I think we should just focus on those.
I agree 100% with Vice Chair Cavie, but I'm really interested in taking our steps during the priority list, and looking forward to a fall town meeting.
I think it's wise. Is that it?
Any other...
Well, I would ask, do you have any other questions as to, while we're here, any other part of our, you know...
How much money do you take in a year?
Mr. Gito had a question.
Me?
How much money do you take in?
I know, I just said me. So our revenue, last year, we took in 1.9...
It was something.
Million?
Okay, so your, your total budget is...
Oh, our total budget?
That's what, at least, that's what I see. So you take in a million?
No.
So revenue?
So...
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about what revenue is coming into the general fund from...
No, 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 I'm asking you what you take in on your ambulance.
Right, so those, those are real numbers?
I can't see that, and I can't see that. So I'm asking you the question.
So I apologize.
Last fiscal year, and we're projected to take in 2.8 million in FY '23.
And, and most of your, most of your runs are ambulance runs?
I would say, yeah, just, just north of 62, 63%.
Okay.
Yep.
So I guess I'm having a hard time just listening to those numbers...
Mm-hmm.
Getting a sense that we're going to make money by increasing the ambulance runs. We're going to be further ahead.
Be able to staff a third ambulance more often than not with the addition?
No, I understand that.
To meet the demand.
So what I would say...
Sports that we do and not another town?
Look, it, it doesn't make any difference what town...
It does.
Takes a person.
Avon takes a Stoughton resident, we don't...
We don't get any money.
But if we take a Stoughton resident...
We do.
And it costs us more money to take it...
Well, I guess, I guess my...
Look, I thought your argument was that we would, we would make money, just, do you want to talk? Go ahead.
Oh, no, 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 sir. No, my apologies.
I thought your argument was if you have more people, you're going to more than break even.
Well, can I answer that?
Yes.
Okay, so first of all, we, we are a service, we're not, we're not a private company that makes money, right?
I understand.
So, but, hold on, so when you say, we thought, you thought we would make money, if you're comparing that to our, our budget, there's no way we're going to make $7 million, we're not going to be able to self-fund. What I'm saying is, is that over the past three years, we've missed out on, we've had to call 474 ambulances, 473 ambulances from another town to come to Stoughton to transport. I'm saying if we had a, if we had the staff, if we had the three extras, we could man that other ambulance to capture those calls. Now, there's always going to be circumstances where everybody's out, and even the third ambulance is out, and maybe we needed a fourth ambulance up on the highway. I can't cap, I can't go through every scenario. All I'm saying is, is that we're seeing other towns coming in and transporting Stoughton residents or needs for service. And I'm saying if we have the 15, that will allow us to staff that third ambulance when needed to pick up that other, those other calls. That's, that's all I'm trying to make the case for, is the fact that we are...
Okay, thank you.
I, but I didn't answer your question, I know...
You, you sort of got around it, and I'm, I don't, I mean that in a good way, not a bad way.
Okay.
What, what I'm hearing you say is that, that if you had more people, you would get more than $2.8 million. But to get to 2.9, or whatever the number is, it would cost more money than what you get in.
Well, so obviously there's...
I think the answer to that is yes.
Well, it depends, everything's dependent, right? So you're talking approximately 80, let's just reuse our numbers, 80,000 plus 200, 20,000 in benefits, so $100,000 maybe? I don't know the actual true number of that. That investment, I would say, over three years, with three people, you know, if you're at nine, if you're at, you know, $300,000 for three, for three years, you're at 900, you're still, if we captured all that money, you're still 200 and somewhat thousand dollars over what it cost, right? What it cost to man that, or to staff three positions, correct? If you use that number, if we say we captured all that, or more, but it's north of the 900,000, now you're making money. That's why I also opened with, we are understaffed right now to standards, right? So we have to look at level servicing. This is, this is where, this is where I feel like Mark did a real good job, and I had asked him, and I believe I asked Mr. Coulter, you know, we, we were put forth with the, with actually, our job was to not only, not only kind of keep things level, right, but to level service. I'm, I'm saying we're not doing that right now, right?
Right.
Those numbers, those numbers are real. Our calls have gone up over 1,200 calls in three years. We're not even providing, we're not even able to provide that, and we thought we could before. I do not know what's happening out there that our call volume has gone up so much, but I know it has. Those are, those are data pulled from national reporting that we are mandated to, to put in. So when you, when, you know, Mr. Tizziel asked me to level service, I'm like, well, I'm telling you, we can't, we're not doing that right now, and we're not even meeting the NFPA standard as to how many should be requiring on these, even what they consider low hazard, that would be a single, maybe even possibly a two-family structure fire. So, you know, along with the potential of making revenue, bringing in, bringing in more revenue to the general account, where we are all under the understanding, we are not in a good position right now as a town, health-wise, financially, right?
I think I've said that a few times.
Well, I'm, now I'm saying it, so we're just trying to provide, you know, hey, there's a possibility, and I agree, if it's two, it's two. If there's a potential for three, that's great. All I'm saying is, here's an opportunity for us to capture, what I know a real number is the 400,000 that are not coming into the general account. Now, if it costs more, it costs more, but at the same time, if, if it's costing more to put three on, to me, it's firefighter safety, and it's resident safety, and that's what we do, we provide a service. We don't make widgets, we don't, we don't, we're not in the, you know, we provide public safety, a service to the town, and I'm just saying, with these three positions, here's an opportunity, maybe it's a win-win. You know, I don't see a lot of other opportunities out there right now that will make such a direct impact. I know down the road, FY '25, I understand that, but can we wait? I don't know. I don't know the answer, I'm just trying to prefire. I said when I came into this position, I've said to every one of my firefighters, come to me with, don't just come to me with a problem, come to me with a solution. I'm just trying to provide a little bit of a solution here, that's all.
I want to thank you so much for your attendance, Chiefs, tonight.
I want to thank, I want to thank you for allowing us and giving us this opportunity, that's all.
You have, you have convinced me personally of the need.
I appreciate it.
So thank you.
I think they should have four.
Four.
Three's fine, dude.
I'm all in for six.
Seven would be perfect.
Let's go 10.
Wait, are they still recording, because Scott just said that?
Thank you very much.
And just so, the board's always been in full support of public safety.
Thank you, we have one more presentation tonight, we have one more, and that's Water and Sewer, that's Water and Sewer, so thank you very much, Chiefs.
Apologize.
Yeah, that's true. So I would ask the, my fellow board members to limit your questioning to expenses on this topic. Expenses on this topic. So that is the op- So welcome, welcome, welcome. The microphone's already on.
Okay. So I wouldn't really call it a presentation, but give you an overview of the budgets. Okay, fair enough.
As the chair said, we're not going to be discussing revenues tonight. We'll be doing that in a public hearing at some future date. But they have some questions pursuant to your, your expenses.
So we'll start with the board member that asked to hold this department, Water and Sewer. If that was you, Mr. Gito, within.
I guess, I, I, I don't know where, where else to ask this question aside from you. And that is, in your enterprise fund, you have assistant DPW directors and so on and so forth. What are they doing?
I, I don't have any of those, no. It's just me.
So why are, why are they in your enterprise account? Why are they not somewhere else?
Where are you looking? The org chart?
On page 52 and 54 of, of the budget.
A lot of, I can answer that. A lot of those, we can't eliminate those out of the budget because they, they hang on for three-year, four-year cycle in, in the budget process. So.
No, they're not zero.
Bill?
Oh.
Bill can provide an explanation.
Paul, Paul was in on the hearings with me. They did a complete analysis of all of the DPW employees to try to better, better allocate which departments they were working out of. So for example, the, the DPW assistant superintendent would be 0.05 charged to water, 0.95 charged elsewhere, other, other public works departments. And so this was, this was basically a reorganization, Paul, right? By reallocating, they, they were trying to reallocate the cost as to where the costs were being incurred. So that's why you see the FTEs, the assistant superintendent would be 0.05.
When was that analysis done?
Just before this budget season.
This year?
This year, yes. Mm-hmm, yep. So, but that's basically the story throughout all the public works departments.
True that Paul shows up as an allocated cost in five different, five different categories.
I believe that's right. Four or five, yeah.
Not unusual.
Yep.
Please, somebody answer the question. Paul, if, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Excuse me. As Mr. Coulter said, myself, the assistant superintendent, some of the office staff oversee some of the personnel, the, and, and the equipment and material used. So it's really a portion of the overhead that is captured in the expenses in Water and Sewer. So, and that decision was made by Dr. Grimm. That, so, so as you know, excuse me, Mr. Gito, when Water and Sewer were under the complete direction of the Public Works Department, that also happened. So when Water and Sewer became their own departments, as which Mr. McNulty is the department head of each, a little bit of that overhead stayed with that. Managing of the personnel with the same collective bargaining agreements, same equipment, or not all the same equipment, but shared equipment, shared forces on occasion, those types of things that we still were looking to capture within the enterprise funds. Does that answer your question? Is that fair to say, Phil?
I, I hear it, and I think I can understand what you're saying in words. I don't know whether or not I can understand it in terms of, of what happens in reality. That's, that's the question. I mean, you've got water treatment foreman, and then you've got some treatment people, and meter people, and water and sewer program administrator, and, and then you've got a distribution system for your, water distribution foreman, and then you've got sewer collection people, and you've got sewer pump station people. I thought that they all were working out of the old water treatment plant.
What's your question? You've, everything you said is correct. I don't know what.
There you go. And so you have an administrative person there. I, I know that when I call you, Paul, I have, oh.
Phil.
Phil, that, that I have to go through the DPW unless I call you on your cell phone.
No, you just come work into my office.
Yeah, no, I know you are. But, but your phone number rings somewhere else. But that's, that's a phone problem.
It's town-wide phone system, so it's.
But in terms of having staff working there from the DPW, I guess, are the people that are on this?
Org chart?
On this list, are they working on Central Street and the other part of Central Street?
They're all working on Central Street.
Yeah, no, I know, the whole bunch of you are.
What are you getting at?
What I'm trying to get at is, are the numbers in the enterprise account and the people that are in there, are they in fact in, are they really overhead for you, or are they somewhere else and are just still being charged there?
Anybody listed on, on the Water and Sewer budget is, you know, to some degree, if not 100%, or mostly Water and Sewer. There's portions of time that are broken off. For example, a couple of the girls in the, at 950 at the DPW, they're mostly Water and Sewer billing, 80%. So you might, you'll see 80% of their time is charged to Water, so a 40-40. The remaining 20 would be for answering pothole calls and trash calls and trees down, things like that. So it's an effort, as the town manager was saying to, or Bill was saying, to, to allocate people's time, you know, to the extent we can, exactly what it is. And this has been an ongoing process, not just this year. It's been last four or five years.
Part of the reason I'm asking the question is, we need to raise the Water and Sewer rates. And it would be best.
Excuse me, Mr. Gito, the revenue is out of scope for tonight?
I'm not trying to talk about revenue. What I'm trying to talk about is why it is that I'm asking the question. And the reason that I'm asking the question is that the numbers that we have in the Water and Sewer enterprise accounts, if we are going to charge people for the work, the work should be done for that department and not be an offset somewhere else. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I believe that the department, oh, you want to restate? Because I think I got it. It's, it's a functional allocation of, of salary based on time spent.
Yes, if, if I may, Phil and I had this, have had this, this is an ongoing discussion between he and I. In this year, excuse me, like Mr. McNulty just said, say, there's two office personnel located at the Public Works headquarters that were formerly, in this current budget, 23's budget, 50% Water, 50% Sewer. We had the discussion. But they also answer the phone when a tree falls down. They also do the large item list. They, they do this, they do that. We have staff meetings together as a whole, even though we're not a whole, it's, it's whatever it is. So the 50 and 50 from Water and Sewer from, from this current year, we looked at it again, and we said, well, we can justify that at least 20% of that, of their time in resources is not Water and Sewer, with the understanding, and with Phil's argument or his reasoning, that we're charging these people Water and Sewer at them, them at 100%, but they're only doing 80% of the work. So we had that discussion. So most of the percentages, like you see some people in, in the engineering department, were 50%. I think now their one person is only 25, I believe. For, for 24 going-
Another big one is the mechanics. The mechanics used to be 50% Water and Sewer, mostly working on the trash trucks or dump trucks, things like that.
So I do understand that. We do staffing models as well, and what you actually do is, how much time do you spend doing X? How much time do you spend doing Y? And then you allocate the salary to actually what they're doing, instead of saying, oh, put all the salary in one department where they do many different tasks. So that's why, in accounting terms, you allocated based on the function of time you're, what you're actually doing.
That's correct.
And you review that, you should review that on an annual basis, which what I heard is, that's what you did.
Yeah.
That's correct.
It's a year change. 50-50 last year, could be 20, 30, and 50, yeah.
And, and now I'm just recalling Mr. Gito's question as to where each personnel shows up on the org chart. So 50% or more of their salary, of each individual's salary, wherever 50% or more is they show up on that department's org chart. In other words, the two office personnel located at 950 Central Street are on the Water and Sewer org chart and not the Public Works.
So the org chart is tied up to the budget.
Is, is that, does that answer your question?
I understand that.
I would just clarify that location is means nothing. It's a matter of being enterprise.
I, I understand that also. Just hard for me to underst, I'll talk about it later. I, I, it's the assistant superintendent's positions that get me, as opposed to if you had clerical staff that you were listing there, that would be one thing. But it seems like you're not. But let me stop. It's not a big item. It's not like $1 million.
I think you need to come.
Then I would ask if there are any other questions from any other board members, because I think you explained it quite well. Any other questions? Oh, Mr. Kriski, I almost missed you.
Just a real quick one. DPW and Water and Sewer, what are you using for tracking staff productivity?
Excuse me. In terms of a database or just?
Whatever, piece of paper, anything. Can you validate every position you have?
Did you say, can we validate every position?
Yes.
Yes.
You have a way to track time? Job performance? Or what are we doing every day?
Time sheets, how about observation?
Yeah, we, we set up a-
Any audits, you know, anything.
We have a daily sheet. The foreman do, I would say, a log. It's not necessarily a log, but the supervisors know exactly what the foreman and their crews, what work activities they performed that day. Is that, is that your question?
Is that your comment?
I'm sorry?
Is that your comment?
I-
You know where I'm going with this question?
A little bit.
I'll leave it there. You want my answer? Sure. We, we do a daily worksheet for, you know, assignments for both Water and Sewer sides, distribution and collection. All the water stations have to have a log at each station, logging what the pH is, the chlorine levels, pumping gallons for each station. So that has to be in each station by state law. So that's all logged, and, and the foremen have a log themselves. So that's- So do you know where I'm going with this question? No. Okay. I'm good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Cavie.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Good evening, and thank you very much, everyone. Good night. See you next time.